The 12th regular meeting of the Metford City Council will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Counselor Camuso. Counselor Caviello. Present. Counselor Knight. Present. Vice President Lou Burn.
Present.
Counselor Martin.
Present.
Counselor Penta.
Present.
Vice President Bill. Present. Since present, one temporarily absent, please rise to the podium and play. I pledge allegiance to the republic in which it stands, one nation, and the God of all the earth. Counselor Camuso is part of the meeting. It is unavoidably contained and will be arriving shortly. The chair recognizes Counselor's pet of the suspension rules.
Mr. President, I move this motion to the fools to allow a citizen to speak as it relates to her concern.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Elsie Ashworth and I own a hair salon at 75 Riverside Avenue, Metford Square. It's on the side of the municipal lot. After 27 years at this location, myself and my customers had never been subjected to pay to park. It is today a fact in many cities and towns. It takes adjustments. However, it was put in at the worst time of the year in the middle of three terrible snowstorms. I think it was put in without thought and much consideration with a plan which was imperfect and had so many errors. Try as you go, I call it. The merchants and business owners were burdened with additional work, teaching people how to run the kiosks, keeping change on hand, assisting the elderly. In a snowstorm frustrated, I called the mayor's office and said to Linda, "I am asked, am I asked, to shovel the kiosks out also? My client cannot reach it." She said, and this was terrible, "Have her walk to the next one." Now she was in her 80s with a cane. If there had been better communication between pay to park and the merchants, we would have known they did not have to pay in a snowstorm. Now I have pictures on my iPhone showing the clients with wet hair, full of hair color, standing in the snow in 10-degree weather. By the way, the color on her hair was affected by the cold and I had to redo it for free. Now I have kept many notes for months and things have changed. Winter is gone, spring in here, and the pay to park is not going to disappear. I have condensed and rewritten my notes over the months because I realize some of the fear is because there's very little information and it is so confusing. I have spoken to Pay to Park, the mayor's office, the chief of police. I find what is so today is changed tomorrow. Kiosks are not probed and not kept into date. They are not in tune with what we were told. I ask for Pay to Park and the city officials to get their act together so that we can all be informed and be on the same page. My staff and I have paid the $100 fee to be able to park and we continue to be harassed with tickets. Myself with a handicap ticket, I have gotten three tickets and I have to take time out of my busy life to go to the Pay to Park office and straighten it out. Questions need to be answered and made publicly known, however, in the newspaper, at the senior center, perhaps a letter to the editor of the transcript. We need to be educated and told what to do and what not to do. Questions need to be answered. Some questions about the kiosks continued to be asked of me. Let's say someone puts 50 cents in for half an hour. Can they add more money with the kiosk? Will the kiosk recognize the change? Question two. It's been told we are now to park three hours. It has changed from two hours to three hours. Well, when will the kiosks recognize this and can it be done in one transaction? Question three. Now from two to three hours, can we park the car and go through this without moving the car, which we have been told? It's crazy to have to come out of a business, a manicurist, a hairdresser, a dentist, and have to move a car. In the municipal lot, it is not too hard. There's always another space. But what happens on High Street, Salem Street, Riverside Ave? Move the car, lose your space, tough luck. There may not be another one available. There are also many rumors out there that upset my employees and these might just be rumors. That is that next year it will be $400 for permits for employees. I would lose most of my help as they are part-time. Again, I say, these are rumors, but why not let it be clear to what's going on next year? Even the transcript said tokens may be available to merchants to buy at discount prices to hand out to their customers. We're not meter maids. We have enough on our plate to take care of. Thank you for listening to me. This has been a real problem. It has affected business. It has affected the feelings Metford citizens have about Metford. We love Metford, but we have been really, you know, in a tough way to do business. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming up, ma'am.
Thank you.
And please know that the council hears your concerns and that we have been working to get the record straight on many of your concerns. And in two weeks, we'll have a committee of the whole meeting with the traffic commission, which has authority over the new parking program, to have them report back to us on some of the changes that they've made and to hear some of our additional concerns regarding all those matters. Counselor Penta.
Elsie, could you just come?
Could you come up, please? Counselor Penta has a question for you.
You made a comment that related to the fact that you have a handicap placard and you've been tagged three times.
Yes, three times.
And you, did you relate that to the chief of police?
Well, one time I was tagged, probably in January. My handicap ticket was up. I went to the Pay to Park office. It was ironed out. I got one again last Friday, went up yesterday. And when the lady, a very nice lady called Pam, looked up the records, she excused that Friday ticket. But she also saw that I got one on February 14th, which I was not aware of. The ticket had gone up from $25 now to $50 because it was not paid in 21 days. I said to her, "Had I known I had a ticket, I would have been right up here, just like I was, for the ticket I thought that I got last Friday." Well, I didn't know about the ticket. You know, they're lightweight, they weigh what you, same weight as you get on a stopping shop, you know.
Receipt.
Receipt, thank you. And in that weather, it could have been blown away. I could have scraped it off with the, moving the snow off the window. I was not aware of it.
This is, Mr. President, and anyone who might be listening, this is just symptomatic as to what's going on with Republic's attitude here in the city of Metford. We have a resolution further run into the agenda that will address some of these things. But attacking a person, so to speak, with a handicap spot, these people, it's obvious that they're not trained properly. They're out-of-towners. As far as I'm concerned, they're bounty hunters. They're just coming in here to make as much money as they can at the expense of the taxpayers and small business. So when we get to this conversation, Mr. President, as I asked you before, and we have our meeting in some two weeks, this is a serious issue, tagging people, especially people that have a handicap placard. That's just not right. And that shows a complete dereliction of somebody's duty to their job, knowing who they should tag and who they shouldn't tag. So I thank you for bringing that forward.
Well, I've seen many different fellows out there in the cars. I wish they were Metford citizens. I'd like our money to go to Metford citizens. So I see that this program pays for so many outsiders to get a paycheck. And it's the merchants and the citizens that are paying. And I wish, I truly wish, a lot more money would go to Metford so we can see the results and everybody comments who comes to the salon. But we really feel under the gun all the time in the shop. We're constantly monitoring, "Did you pay? Did you pay? Have you paid?" We're out there assisting, you know. We become an accomplice to not getting paid for it either. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Penta. So on the motion of Counselor Penta to receive and place on file or refer to the committee of the whole meeting to make sense.
Refer to the committee of the whole.
Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Additionally, Mr. President, this council has been on record on several occasions requesting that Republic be able to turn off the machines when they're not supposed to be in operation. And I know just recently we voted unanimously to have that done. The hours of operation now are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And these machines are accepting money prior to 8:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m. We met tonight for our community block grant public service proposals and one of the human service agencies, the Consumer Advisory Commission, came before us for additional funding. And I mentioned to the director of the program that this issue with the kiosk has been a long, ongoing issue and something that they should review. And I ask that this council go on record and send a letter to the Consumer Advisory Commission asking if they can intervene on behalf of every Metford resident to make sure these machines are not capable of accepting money before or after the hours of operation and also that it's publicly posted throughout the community what the exact hours of operation are. It's very misrepresenting for residents that are trying to do business in the square to try to figure out whether or not they have to pay the kiosk, Mr. President. And I would ask that in a form of a motion tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. So on the motion of Counselor Penta, as amended by Counselor Marks, Counselor Longo Kern.
Thank you. President Del Rosso, so we're having a meeting on the 21st, Tuesday the 21st?
22nd, Wednesday.
Oh, what time?
I think we're calling it for 6:00 to 7:30 in the council chambers. The clerk is going to announce that hence, but I'm told that all the department heads have already received the notifications.
Yeah, I hope Republic's present. I just, I feel like that is almost...
They were requested to be part of that.
It's not soon enough. Within the last few days, I've got complaints with regards to Counselor Penta's concerns. Still no signage on the vehicles that are handing out the tickets. I've got complaints about people waiting in line to pay the parking meter and turn around and they have a ticket. And I've had people who are getting ticketed after they already paid within the timeframe that's allowable for them to be parked in the proper parking spot. So, I mean, that's just in the last few days and we've been getting complaints. It's almost a little bit out of control. You know, they should have guidelines. They should be properly trained and Republic needs to take responsibility for this. Somebody shouldn't have to go with a handicap parking spot or somebody shouldn't have to go who was waiting in line or who actually did pay, take the time out of their busy schedules and go to the parking office to get it taken care of. You know, and the chief of police has been great. You know, if somebody contacts one of us or probably the mayor's office, we can get it all squared away and figured out. But not everybody, you know, thinks to maybe call us or call the mayor's office and they have to go down, take the time out of their work schedule and get it taken care of. It's, you know, the resident was right. This was implemented at the wrong time. And not only that, it's just not performed properly. It's very frustrating and, you know, I look forward to the meeting on the 22nd. Hopefully, we can get a lot accomplished and a lot resolved for our business people and our residents.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So on the motion of Counselor Penta, Counselor Penta.
Just real quick on Counselor Longo Kern's comments. I have pictures here of just this past week and as late as yesterday with these trucks driving around, driving around unmarked in particular locations within the city, on the ring road and designated spots where they're not supposed to be, giving out tickets at 7:30, 8:00 a.m., which is supposed to not start till 8 o'clock in the morning. And we can continue on and on and on. This is in complete violation of the contract on page four of the contract that they have with the city of Metford. You know, I know, Mr. President, you have in the meeting on the 23rd. You know, I don't know how much can be resolved by then, but it's quite obvious. And I'll just end it by saying this. You know, they have the contract signed on October 10th of 2014 and they had the ledger from October 10th, 2014, to January 15th, when it was supposed to be implemented, and strike that, first day of implementation. And on February 3rd, it was Counselor Caviello's resolution offered before the council because at that point in time, from January 15th to February 2nd, the screens were so light and hard to read. The resolution was put on there and as we speak today on April 7th, they're still the same way, hard to read, almost illegible, especially if the sun is out. And we can go through a whole litany of other things beside that. So it's just obvious. And their public relations, it just doesn't work. And maybe they had no human resource background on teaching the folks that are going to work here in the city how to handle the people, talk to the people, whether it's permit parking, whether it's just giving people out tickets and what have you. I think this has been a complete disaster, Mr. President. This is Mayor McGlynn's program. He owns it, lock, stock, and barrow. And if anyone has a concern, as you continue to have concerns, please call his office and tell him that you're dissatisfied and you want resolution to these problems. Because I think the council is speaking up each and every week in behalf of the taxpayers, but the mayor is the one and the only one that can resolve it. He signed the contract. This is his ballgame.
Thank you, Counselor. So on the motion of Counselor Penta, as amended by Counselor Marks, sir, you wish to address us. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Ruggiero. I live on 18 Pembroke Street. Before, I understand that there's going to be a committee of the whole being held on the 22nd. I wish to request two pieces, articles of information from Republic Parking so we can review from the public. The first is on their contract attachment on page 11, the operator's personnel. The operator acknowledges its responsibility to submit a recruitment plan that includes a description of its strategy to hire local residents, which shall include recruitment fares, local print, radio, and internet advertisements. I'm not aware of any plan that has been posted. So if one could be reviewed by the public before the committee of the whole, that would be of great help to me so we can prepare. The second thing I wish to ask for, if we could actually see the daily sales receipts that Republic Parking has posted. I've not been able to access any of those online daily receipts that they've received. And I'm most interested in the money that they've received after 6 o'clock because I know that the meters are still running. So I think it's important for the city to know the money that they have acquired that is illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all those in favor, all those opposed. Mr. Clerk, please mark Counselor Camuso as present. On the motion of Counselor Knight to revert back to the regular order of business, all those in favor, all those opposed. Commendations 15-302, welcome to City Hall, to Metford City Council Chambers, the Greater Boston League Champion Metford High School Gymnastics Team and the Greater Boston League Champion Metford High Girls Basketball Team. Counselor Knight, you had these resolutions before us. If you'd like to come up and assume command.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
And welcome up the recipients of these good awards.
Mr. President, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to come up here this evening and present the 2014-2015 Metford High School Varsity Girls Basketball Team with accommodation, recognizing their GBL championship season. Girls, you've made the city of Metford very proud. Keep up the good work. I've had a conversation with your coach. We could ask Coach Burke to come up here and join me in the presentation. Coach Burke's explained to me what a great group of individuals that he has on his team. They're both great athletes on the basketball court and they're also very good in the classroom. They're young, committed, Metfordites that have blue and white in their veins that have done great. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to read into the record the citation. "The Metford City Council takes pleasure in awarding this council commendation to the Metford High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team in recognition of winning the Greater Boston League title and a playoff berth in the MIAA Division One North Girls Basketball Tournament for the 2014-2015 season, signed by Frederick Del Rosso Jr., Council President Adam Knight, Metford City Counselor, this day of April 7th, 2015. It's my great pleasure to present the first citation to Sam Moran, number 55. Not here this evening. Gigi Braga, number 44.
Thank you very much.
Sofany Jakes, number 35. Ashley Eisner, number 33. Abby McCarthy, number 22. Hannah O'Leary, number 20, and the captain of the team. Destiny Fitzgerald, number 15. Grace Callahan, number 14. Claire Dawn Cast, the number 11, and her co-captain. She comes from a great family of hockey players. Rhiannon Arnold, number 10. Lashay Sineskar. I'd like to take a moment to introduce Coach Burke to say a couple of words on behalf of the team.
On behalf of the girls' basketball team, I'd like to thank the council for having us up here to acknowledge us going 6-0 in the GBL. It's our fourth year. The last six that we won the GBL and two of the last three years, we've gone undefeated. We graduate six girls this year, but we have six returning girls to keep the tradition going in our JV and freshman program. I think we'll add to it also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to point out, girls, that Counselor Longo was a star on the basketball team back in the late 90s, the late 90s. Also joining us this evening, folks, would be the Metford High School Gymnastics Team, the 2014-2015 GBL champions. I'd ask Coach Fortino or Coach Small, if they're in attendance, to come join me on stage. The first recipient from the 2014-2015 GBL championship gymnastics team, the citation would read, "The Metford City Council takes pleasure in awarding this council commendation to the Metford High School Varsity Gymnastics Team in recognition of winning the Greater Boston League Championship for the 2014-2015 season." And the first citation is for Camilla Hollingsworth. You can hold the cartwheels till the end. The next citation will go to Dominique Savoye. Courtney DiDomenico. Alyssa Valentin. Alana Mullin. Madison Cavelo. Victor Ho. Renee Stewart. Erica Lavoy. Camilla Ribero. Kylie Mahoney. Victoria Falco. Abby Klein. Olivia Ross. Samantha Albarino. Just like to introduce Coach. Coach Small's going to say a few words about the girls.
It was actually a really, a really good year this year. We had a lot of injuries. So the fact that we took back our GBL title from 2010, we're very excited about. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach. On the motion of Councilor Carviallo for suspension of the rules, to take a presentation from the audience, all those in favor, all those opposed. The city council, in the past two weeks, has asked Representative of Lawrence Memorial Hospital, Hallmark Health, to be present and speak with us. So at this time, we invite Alan McDonald to address the council. Yes, President Alan McDonald.
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam President, members of the council, thank you for having me come in tonight. I understand that there's an opportunity for me to talk about what we've been doing at the Lawrence Memorial Hospital campus on noise control, and we have been working on an issue that came up even two years ago, when one of the neighbors did call, and I was lucky to get the call and have a chance to visit with the neighbor and work on getting an engineering firm to come in and look at noise that was happening. We found from a whistle over the operating room at Lawrence that was making a shrill sound. We replaced a bearing on that whistle. We put some what we call attenuators across the air ducts along Lawrence Road that greatly reduced the sound of air vents when the air is coming in and the fans are going. And we actually had, over the course of the last year and a half, a few visits from the State Department of Environmental Protection and from the Medford Department of Public Health to take a look at what the noise situation was at Lawrence. And we have not been able to identify any noise that has not been limited so far. And I know that there's at least one neighbor that has not been satisfied with the work that's been done, and I feel badly about that. And we've said that we'll continue to monitor, and any sounds that can be identified that we can address, we are going to do that. We just haven't been able to identify ourselves any sounds that are going on that we can limit. We actually take decibel readings two and three times a day on the property. And we have, in discussion with the inspectors for both the state and for the city, looked at possibilities. And we've had everything from, it could be sound coming off the barriers on Route 93 and from traffic, to it could be some kind of air transfer that's going on but not identifiable. So we keep, we keep working on it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Also, if you could, I know the council's gonna want, if you could, in a nutshell, bring us up to date on the transfer, merger, ownership issues regarding the hospital as well. Councilor Penta?
Alan, you indicated that you've done a host of issues as it relates to, hopefully, remediation, remediating the noise at that particular point. My question, too, is this, as I'm talking, I'm looking for your email, I believe that you sent to one of the residents, as it relates to noise being loud enough or disturbing enough that you folks would be offering space in your hospital for her to run her business. What's the difference between that time till now, if the noise issue is still the same?
Well, we would be very pleased to address the noise issue, to limit the noise if we could identify together what the noise is that we're talking about. We haven't, we've looked even, I've been looking at a letter that I took out today from last year when we wrote to the State Department of Public Health during our public hearing process, that I could leave if it's good enough to leave with the council to give you an idea of some of the things that we've talked with the State Department of Public Health about. Could I do that? Okay, that would be, it is informative as to some of the work that we did do, as far as the engineering firm that we did hire. We actually hired a couple of different engineering firms, one that helped us with the, what they call attenuators on the louvers, the air vents on Lawrence Road, and another one who looked at what we might do to the air conditioning units. We understand that the noise that causes problems is in the winter as well as the summer, so we don't think it's got to do with air conditioning. And we are concerned that it might have to do with traffic as much as anything else. But we haven't been able to identify something that we could address. I'm looking at a note that came from the State Department of Public Health last year when they were looking at the property, to say that, actually, it was a note to Mrs. Casey on Terrace Road, who said that this gentleman with the State Department of Public Health had talked with the Medford Board of Health regarding the noise issue, and he said that they suspect the noise may be coming from the sound barriers along the highway rather than the hospital. And he says the next step is to have a gentleman from the Department of Environmental Protection conduct a tone test to get an accurate reading. That was last summer, and that was done. And we had some unannounced visits from both the state and the city department of public health, and they took decibel readings and began tracking the readings and did not find any noise issues to deal with. So that was the difficulty we had with, with the report. This is from the Medford City Noise Measurement Report, which says, "No significant findings." This is August of 2014. Multiple visits to the area trying to capture when noise was described to be louder continued to yield no findings. It's not clear what is causing the noise, even though it may be a continuous noise irritating to the occupant of a home on Terrace Road. And we keep looking for that. I mean, we'd love to address it, frankly.
Okay. Mr. President, through you to the chair, you have, I have a letter here dated September 6th, 2013, for which you addressed to me. And in that letter, you addressed two particular issues, one regarding the positive effects, if in fact Lawrence Memorial Hospital does go into effect into a merger. And then you have an ending paragraph, it says, "On a second matter, which is a noise emitted into the neighborhood from Lawrence Memorial Hospital, we have contracted with a firm to install covers over the air intakes at LMH. The insulation is scheduled for next Friday. It should reduce the sound a great deal, and we hope it will provide relief to the neighbors needed." So there is an acknowledgement dating back to 2013, that the hospital acknowledges that there is, there's an issue of noise in the neighborhood. Now, if the state is coming in, or the city is coming in, and maybe they're not there on a 24-hour basis, they may be just coming in there and putting up one of those air monitor machines and seeing if they're here. I personally was in the hospital, in a doctor's office that faces the Lawrence Memorial, the Lawrence roadside, and I could hear it in the doctor's office. Was it consistent? No, but it did run in intermittent periods of time. Now, I believe it was some two to three weeks ago, the resident, Mrs. Casey, appeared before the council, and I believe, and I could be wrong, because I know she's sitting there, she had what she had, what I believe, which is an independent contractor, who would be willing to come in and service, I believe it was a $400-$500 fee, and I, I could be reading this wrong, but my impression was that, I believe that she would accept, and hopefully the hospital would accept whatever the findings might be, that would, that would make resolution to the matter. And Mrs. Casey is there, she can, she can speak for herself, but I think that's the way I understood it.
Okay, well, I, thank you.
And that should not be at her cost, it should be at the hospital's cost, because the track record exists that you folks at the hospital, before you became CEO, and I wish you good luck, but more importantly, you know, the neighborhood right now is an issue, and it's, it'll always be an issue, as long as that hospital is there.
First of all, I want to say thank you very much for, for your good wishes, and I also want to say I really respect what the council does, in this case and all cases, and I feel that I'm working for the Medford City Council and all the residents of Medford in the job that I have now. I think there's a tremendous public asset that this hospital is, and I want it to be as strong and good for the community as possible. And I feel that I'm representing the same folks that you represent, and that I'm working for you and for the citizens, and I want to do a good job with that hospital, very, very much so.
The only difference is this, you make a lot more money than we do, that's the difference. So you have to do a good job to stay in your position, okay? The people can throw us out at any time, but you know, you're stuck there with a good salary, so.
Well, I want to do the job whether I get paid or not. I was 20 years a volunteer for LMH and Hallmark Health before I worked for them. I've been 26 years active with the hospital, only the last three working for them. 23 years as a volunteer, because I love the place so much, and I want to do a good job, whether they pay me or they don't pay me, I want to do a good job. Let me just say, if I could, Mr. Penta?
Sure.
I did not know that she had come in and talked about the $400-$500. We spent $25,000 on those covers for the air vents, so it wasn't, it's not a problem of the $400. We actually have spent altogether some $50,000-plus dollars in responding to the comments that we've heard from Mrs. Casey, trying very hard to please her and do the things that she wants to have done. So it's not $400, we're over $50,000 already to try to.
But I understand that, but your own emails acknowledge the fact that a noise problem did exist, and however, and however they've been resolved, mitigated, or whatever they might be, so be it. But can we have Mrs. Casey just answer that question? I, I think this will resolve the whole problem.
Could I, could I say before that?
Sure.
That letter of September 13, that was prior to putting on the covers over the events. So we put the covers over the events in September of 13, and the measurements I talked about here were August of 14. These are, these are reports that came in from the State Department of Environmental Protection and the Medford Department of Health in August of 2014. The louvers were covered in September of 13, that's when I wrote to you, September 13, that we were studying it. And we took the recommendation, we spent $25,000, nothing to do with the money, but we, we decided that we wanted to do the best we could, and that was, so we acted on it. I just don't, don't want you to think we didn't do anything, that's my.
Nobody's saying that. I just, you know, just want this problem resolved and to go away. So could we just, should we have Mrs. Casey just answer that question?
Yes, Mrs. Casey, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, my name is Michelle Casey, and I live at 98 Terrace Road. Thanks again for having me back. Yes, I, I have done some research, and I have contacted two independent acoustical engineering firms, and what has been told to me is that if they do come into my home, they can run testing to determine, in fact, what the noise is. And that's what I am requesting, that that work takes place and that we can get a resolution to this. And, you know, I will acknowledge, you know, Mr. McDonald and I have had communication back and forth, but at this point, you know, I, I need to have my home so that my family and I can live in, live in my home. So thank you.
Mr. McDonald, you can continue if you'd like.
I'm just, I'm only wondering, and I'm not opposed to doing more testing at all, but I, and I will talk with Mrs. Casey about it, but I don't understand how the testing inside the house is going to identify the noise outside at Lawrence Memorial's campus. I mean, maybe it would, but I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I'm wondering how the testing that we've done all over the campus, on the roofs of the hospital, in, by the, by the air vents and all.
Actually, the, the report that I sent you does state the work that they would do in acoustical engineering firm when they come in, and they're able to measure the noise from inside a contained facility, which would be my home. So they are, in fact, there's many engineers out there, acoustical engineers out there, that will do it. And I did find someone local in Cambridge that can, in fact, do that and determine what the noise is, and hopefully come up with a solution to, to mitigate it, because we just can't live in our home, and that's, that's the fact. The noise is, is just there, we cannot escape it. You know that, I've told you that many, many times to your face, but I, I need to be able to live in my home. I pay taxes in Medford, and I want to have some peace in my home, so.
I would love to solve it, really would. I mean, and I understand that, I know Mrs. Casey's been there a long time, that there was not the noise for a long time, and that it's the last four years or so. But we don't know, we've not done anything different in the last four years, so we don't know why there would be a noise the last four years but not before that, we just can't figure it out.
Yeah, and I did send to the former president, the two independent acoustical engineering firms, and I did ask for, for you to, for him to look into it and to contract with these folks to, to get a resolution. So hopefully now with you being the, the president, that you'll be able to, to help me with this issue.
Well, that's great, and I was not aware of that request, that they have him take care of it. This is the first thing. Maybe we can do it, maybe we can do that. I guess blind, although I don't want to say that I endorse the acoustical engineer, although I don't know who the firm is, but.
I sent, I actually copied you on that email, you should have that in your email that I sent a couple of months ago.
Well, we'll talk about that, and maybe that's something we can do. Certainly, the expense is not the problem.
Well, I don't think it's that, I think it's just getting to a final resolution, and maybe this outside independent of both of you can bring resolution to the problem. And I think she would be willing to accept it as well.
Thank you. Thank you all. Councilor Carviallo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank Mr. McDonald for coming down here, and Mrs. Casey, and hopefully the two of you can work something, I think the $400 is a small price to pay for everyone's peace of mind.
That's true. If that would work, it would be fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilor Camuso?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I said what I had to say regarding the noise a few weeks ago, that I was sure the Lawrence Memorial Hospital would do whatever they could under his leadership. But this evening, I would like to publicly thank, number one, and congratulate Mr. McDonald. You know, there's, there's no one better, no one better in my eyes to run our local hospital, someone that's volunteered there, has been a member of the board for 20-plus years, and he's committed to this community. And when we're on the bigger horizon of possibly merging with an international institute that's known for medicine throughout the world, I don't think there's anyone better that could be in charge than Mr. McDonald. So as a city, we're very lucky that we have this young gentleman here. So I want to wish you well in your new position, and very, very, very responsive. I've had to call him three times in the last few months, and gets back to you the same day, and meets the needs of this community every time that something within reasonableness is requested of them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments. I appreciate it very much. I tell you, my loyalty and my heart is right here. My dad ran in 1936 for the city council and didn't make it, he lost by 16 votes of getting on, but he stayed active in Medford over his lifetime, and, and when I got involved in the late 80s at the Lawrence, it was in his name, and I'm still doing it, and I come here and I think of him, how much he would love to be sitting with you gentlemen, and Madam, right, Madam President yourself, he would love to be sitting right here with you, no question about it.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Anyway, you wanted to ask me, Mr. President, a little bit about the potential affiliation?
Yes. We have Councilor Max next.
I'll be brief, Mr. President, but I think the last piece of the puzzle would be this acoustical engineering study. It'll take a snapshot of what's happening in the house, if we can pinpoint, it might be something internal, who knows? Maybe it's something within your own home, we don't know, but we'll find out from this study. I think it'll be worth its weight in gold, President, to have it done and move forward on this issue. I know you have a lot on your plate, and although you want to address these issues, I'm sure you want to get this behind you. So I, I look forward to seeing this done within the next several weeks.
Thank you. Councilor Vice President Lungo Kern?
Thank you, President Delarussue. I also, I want to thank Mr. McDonald for agreeing to do the study at the home, and I, I too, hope it's done within the next few weeks. And if we could, through the chair, if we could get a report on that study, if possible, that'd be greatly appreciated, so we know the outcome.
Yes, so Mr. McDonald will share the outcome of that report with the council. That would be greatly appreciated. And if you could now, at this time, just in nuce, bring the council up to date on the merger process.
Very, very brief from Mr. President. We still continue to have discussions with Partners Healthcare. We are determined that the number one future for the Hallmark Health complex, which is Lawrence Memorial Hospital of Medford, and Melrose Wakefield Hospital Clinic in Redding, Cancer Care in Stonem, is to be working with the Mass General Hospital and Partners Network. They dearly love, as you heard Dr. Torchiana here in the fall of 2013, they dearly love the opportunity to invest some of their resources in these communities, Medford particularly, and Melrose Wakefield, where the larger installations are for Hallmark Health. As you know, we had a consent agreement from Attorney General Martha Coakley, which would have allowed that to go forward, and that was dismissed by the court with new Attorney General Mara Healy at the start of this year. We continue to meet with the Attorney General and with Partners to look for an opportunity to show the Commonwealth of Massachusetts where. to show the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, work hard with the Commonwealth, that putting together Hallmark Health and Partners Healthcare would be a tremendous asset for the communities that we serve for future generations. We believe it's the number-one opportunity for us, knowing we have to, as a community hospital system, grow into a network that can take patients pre-admission through post-discharge with tertiary academic medical center coverage. That's what accountable care organizations are driving, all of us with community hospitals toward. And we see other community hospitals merging with tertiary care centers, and the same argument that they have that's so acceptable when they've done it is the argument we have for our communities. The difficulty we have, of course, is that Partners is the largest of the academic medical centers, and the concern is whether or not there to be anti-competitive practices if indeed we work together. We feel that it's not about that at all for us, it's really about giving an opportunity for patients in the community setting, to stay in the community setting, not have to go into Boston for what they need for lower acuity care, and that is something that Partners needs, because they need, as an economic imperative, to find a way for patients that come into Boston to their institution, staying in the community. We are prepared to serve those patients, and with the combination of the investments that we can make with Partners and attracting the patients to stay in the community at a lower cost, at much more convenience, and we have all of the talent and doctors and nurses to take care of those patients, we feel it's the best solution for the future. And we are still engaged in those conversations, and we have not been told yet that we don't have an opportunity to put it together. I think the concern is whether or not there'd be enough watchdog and restrictions over the activities of our new medical accountable care organization that we would be part of to satisfy the Commonwealth of Mass, that we're not raising prices in the healthcare system, but providing more economical and convenient opportunity for patients. So we're working very hard at it. We're in a pause in the sense that there are no dates for public hearings or court hearings, they're only conversations. So I know that there have been press stories about a pause. The pause is not to concern ourselves with whether it's the right path, the pause is to figure out how to make it happen. And truthfully, it means so very much to our communities that I hope that it becomes more of a public discussion, frankly, about the importance of it to the community level. I know a lot of the public discussion has been whether or not Partners Healthcare is too big to have this happen, and the attention's been on the bigger partner, we're the smaller partner. We would love a little attention on why it's so important to the community, because we think that it will make a tremendous difference for the future of the residents in Medford, future of the residents in Melrose and Wakefield, Malden, Saugus, Reading, North Reading, all the, all the places that are served, but it would make a tremendous difference to be able to have the Lawrence serve a population of a bigger size, frankly, and it would be a tremendous advantage to the citizens of Medford to have that medical complex right there at the Roosevelt Circle where Daniel Lawrence had a beautiful idea of putting that hospital there, because who knew that Route 93 was going to go right by, it's so accessible, so convenient for people, not just in the city of Medford, but other places too. And if we had the volume of people using the Lawrence, which we are prepared to handle, it would make a tremendous difference in building that complex for the future, which is what we'd love to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. Thank you all. So on the motion of Vice President Longo Kern.
Alan, one of the things that came out of the report from the new Attorney General Mara Healy was not only the concern of, of, maybe a lack of competition, but I believe that there were 50 other medical senior people, doctors in hospitals, who indicated that they, there was no belief that those prices were going to go down, and I think that was one of the major issues. Another concern, if I understood it correctly, is the fact that even if this merger is a war to have taken place, the guarantee that the Lawrence Memorial Hospital would become part of the Mass General, or the Partners group, did not have a beginning date. They had that five-year window, so to speak, and I think one of the concerns, because in my letter that I addressed to both Attorney Generals and to the lawyer, and to the judge, is that if this were to take place, I think that the licensure should become operative immediately. So that way, the, the city of Medford knows that the Lawrence Memorial Hospital is not in a holding pattern, and we're not going to be just shuffled around, so to speak, because it's, I'll speak for myself, my opinion is, the Melrose Wakefield right now seems to have gotten the bigger bite of the apple of what could possibly be had here for the city of Medford. So I don't think the Lawrence Memorial is out of the ballgame at all. I, I think it's still in there, but I, I would strongly, and I would write it again, and I would repeat my letter to whoever the attorney or the judge might be, that the Medford licensure for the Lawrence Memorial Hospital has to become an immediate, an immediate decision, not a decision breaker, an immediate decision, so the patients, the administration, the doctors, everybody knows that this hospital is alive and well, and it's not on a holding pattern, because that was the one thing that you did not read in the decision that was, that was rendered by Martha Coakley, that licensure was not in there. And I know Mara Healy has a different, a different position on that, so.
Well, I would say, thank you, and I certainly wouldn't object to that at all. I, I know that when Partners Healthcare, I shouldn't speak for them, can't speak for them, but I know that they are very desirous of having an active campus at Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and it's a very attractive site for them, given where Mass General Hospital is, and we're right up the street as far as they're concerned and I'm concerned. And it's, it'd be a tremendous opportunity for them to be helping us with primary and secondary care in a very accessible location, easily accessible to Mass General Hospital for tertiary care for those patients that were needed from Lawrence, and that would be a tremendous advantage. So they see that. I think the discussion on the immediate license situation was over a three-to-five-year program of putting everything together, because it doesn't happen overnight, but that they, that was part of the definitive agreement, that they would indeed have the license and, and have that be part of Mass General Hospital's administration, with the Hallmark Health administration being part of the management team that would take care of that hospital and keep it going.
My apologies, Counselor.
Judge Saunders, in her written opinion, was very specific as it related to the cost containment not being able to be proven by Partners, and also, I believe, the competition that the cost containment could not prove that it would be able to do. I, I think in the decision that was rendered by the Attorney General, the first one, Coakley, I believe there was a five or a six-year gap in there, a window, that they said that they wouldn't raise rates.
There were, yes, there was a five, there actually five and eight and 10, there were different kinds of windows, yeah.
Right, okay. And I think with Mara Healy, the new Attorney General was looking for something that would be more of an establishment, that it would be well-recognized and it could be amortized out, and I think that was one of the things that was, that was deficient in, in the report that the Attorney, Martha Coakley, the original Attorney General, who rendered her opinion on this, but the licensure issue is the key.
I appreciate what you're saying, because I, I think I'm understanding that that could be a big advantage to us if we could get that straightened out.
Yes.
Yep.
And I think, whatever your negotiations might be right now with Partners, I think that should probably be premier right on the table. You know, we'd like to be a party of this, but, you know, we have to have an understanding that we have doctors that are well-respected in this community, you know, we don't want them to leave, we certainly don't want the citizens of Medford to leave the Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and for whatever and however it's going to be left as an established hospital, but if we don't have our license, or our licensure, or however you want to term it, in hand, and we have to wait, that's just going to prompt these people to leave and to, it's going to prompt your nurses to say, hey, wait a minute, where am I going to go?
I appreciate what you're saying. We, we would still have the license under that prior agreement.
Right.
It wouldn't be that we would be unlicensed, it would still be very, very active, but, but I hear what you say, and it's an interesting point, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Camuso.
I was just going to speak after this paper, if we could take a few other items under suspension, so.
Thank you very much. So on the motion of Counselor Carvajal, as amended by Vice President Longo Kern, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very, very much, Mr. President. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for moving towards resolution, this neighborhood issue.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Cappucci need to speak on this matter? I apologize. If you would, just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Robert Cappucci, 71 Evans Street. While I have this opportunity with President McDonald here, through the chair, I, I just have a few questions. I definitely don't want Medford to lose anything in a possible merger. I strongly agree with the points Counselor Penta is bringing up, but, but there's another aspect to this that, that deeply concerns me as I work in the medical device industry, as I'm sure thousands of more Medford residents do, Stonham and this, this greater community does. So with all, with all due respect, through the chair, if I could ask President McDonald to perhaps speak on, on his, what's the word, on, on his professional opinion about these conversations he's having as to, he said there's no timeline or anything that, that could be projected, but based on the conversations that he's having, because a lot of, a lot of jobs are in the balance. From my industry personally, I make laser scalpels, and our, our sales went through the floor. Lots of people got laid off. It's not just my company. Hologic up, up in Medford, their market share went down 40% with, with the, the larger doom hanging over us to, to, for lack of a better term, of the Affordable Care Act, which caused a lot of insurance rates to go up, a lot of hospitals to make these mergers that are going on, not just in our community but around the country, that are, are affecting a lot of people and, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. President, but this is a very huge issue. I, I'll try to be expedient, but, but please don't rush me out the podium, with all due respect.
Point of personal privilege, Counselor Knight.
Mr. McDonald came here this evening to discuss an issue on Terrance Road, and I find it unfair to have him come down here and now discuss the issue of the hospital merger. I think that Mr. McDonald might want to have an opportunity to prepare himself to, to come down here and speak about this, to maybe get some questions in advance, to have answers to, Mr. President. So, you know, I certainly can understand the, the issue of uncertainty, and I think that nobody understands that better than Mr. McDonald, because he's very uncertain as to what's going to happen as well. And to, to put him on the spot right here this evening and ask him, what's going on with this, what do you think about that, what do you think about this, when there's no plan finalized, it, it really puts him in a bad position. He's going to say one thing, he might come back three months later and the situation's different, then we're all going to say, you said this at this meeting. So I, I think we might want to give Mr. McDonald an opportunity to prepare himself to come down and speak about this, you know, he's always been willing to come down to the council, he's never been afraid to stand up at that podium and take questions for hours at a time, Mr. President, but I just think that, you know, we have to extend to him the courtesy to, to be willing to have an opportunity to prepare if, in fact, he is going to speak at length on this type of stuff.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Point of clarification, Counselor, Uncle Kern.
Thank you, President De La Russa. I believe Mr. McDonald is the one that's began speaking about the mer, possible merger situation.
At my behest.
Oh, correct. And I believe he's, you know, able to say, yeah, able to say whether or not he's able to speak on something, so if we have questions, we have questions. I mean, I understand both sides, but.
Thank you. So we're going to allow Mr. Cappucci to give us concise, on-topic questions and then briefly allow.
With all due respect, I'm not asking any questions to put anybody on the spot. This council.
We know that.
Asked about the merger, and since it did come up, as a citizen representing thousands of people that work in the industry who are very concerned about this merger, I think it's, it's prudent, I think it's sufficient, and I think it's precise.
That's been established, so if you could.
To ask through the chair, President McDonald's professional opinion on whether or not he thinks this merger's going to happen, and whether or not, based on the conversations he admitted having, whether or not, on what kind of a timeline we're, we're looking at.
Thank you. So you've made your questions clear, and Mr. McDonald will now answer them for you.
Are, are in the balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cappucci.
Thank you. Counselor Knight, thank you very much, and it's a good point, that I would love to come back another time and even have a more detailed discussion, so I appreciate that very much. But what I can say is that it is a huge issue, and we would love to do it tomorrow, we would just love to do it right away. We thought, we started discussions with Partners Healthcare, it was the summer of 2012, so it'll be three years this summer, and I honestly thought we would get there in 13, certainly in 14, and we did not. When Attorney General Coakley filed her consent agreement, it was April of 2014, 12 months ago, and I thought we were there, but it didn't happen. But what's happening in the industry nationally is this consolidation, and it is got to do with the fact that there's less inpatient volume for hospitals. I mean, we built hospitals up from the late 1920s up through the end of the century with a lot of subsidization and a lot of first-dollar insurance coverage, so people came to the hospitals more frequently when they, when they needed to, in a sense, they were more covered, you know, now we have more consumer choice on deductibles and copays, we don't have as much immediate use of the hospital facilities all the time, and also, technology has helped out so much that we don't come in for four or five days for appendicitis or hernia or those kinds of things, which once upon a time we did. Now, that's an afternoon procedure and you go home and get a call the next morning. So it's changed dramatically what we built the hospitals for, and it's become much less across the country, a hospital-centric system, it's a community-centric system, it's about wellness in the community, reaching out and keeping people healthier and not having to come into the hospital as much. It's changed the way we make our investments for the future of healthcare, and it's not just about the beds in a hospital as much as this electronic health records, recruiting physicians, setting up medical office buildings, having clinical diagnostic opportunities that are not overnight stay, and so it's changed a lot. And what we see at Lawrence, and the plan that we have put forward is still continuing to have beds, but we have 134 beds licensed at Lawrence now, we don't use 134 beds, we haven't for a long, long time. We'd like to put, in the definitive agreement, as you know, was to put 90 to $100 million into the Lawrence, but not for 134 beds, because we don't use 134 beds. If we put $100 million into 134 beds and we only use 40 or 50, we wouldn't be able to pay the $100 million back, we'd be out of business and we would not have Lawrence. However, if we invest for what the patient base uses it for now, which is ambulatory, outpatient, clinical, diagnostic, short-stay, we can always build up if things don't ever stay the same, as we know. If you need more beds over time, you can always build up to have it, if you're there and if you're part of the community. If you're not there, and you can't just start it overnight, it's just too big of a job. You see what's happened in other communities around us, Hollington, Woburn, Stonem, Malden, you know, we're not immune from that. We're trying very hard to make it work, and we can see how to make it work, and that's the investment to reach the patient base the way the patients want to use the hospital healthcare system now, and it's different than 1970 and 80 and 90. We see it, we know how to do it, we just need to get going with it, and we want to, we, we want to do it in 2015 and get it settled and move it forward, so we're working very hard on that, and we take great pride in what we have on that hill, and we want to make it even better.
Thank you. Mr. President. Counselor Camuso.
If I may, in the past, my take on this whole merger has been, I'm looking at a trend in the medical field in greater Boston, which is unique and it's, has the best teaching hospitals around, but the fact of the matter is, there is a major trend from the 1990s to today, that hospitals, when's the last time we saw a new hospital opening? 1937, when Daniel Lawrence opened this up, or, or whatever the year was? Hospitals are tending to close now. New England Memorial, right here in Stonem, it was sitting as a vacant building up until recently, a few years ago. The Malden Hospital, the Witten Hospital was on its last breath, and Cambridge Health Alliance came in and bought it. In the Boston Globe yesterday, the Spalding Hospital for Continuing Medical Care North Shore, 275 employees, 160 beds, closing this September, this September. Now, that's going to become a vacant building up in Salem. The last thing I want to see as a city councillor is a vacant building in the Lawrence Estates. That's the last thing I want to see. I am convinced, based upon statistical data, that we've been watching in this greater Boston area, on the South Shore, on the North Shore, and throughout the nation, that without mergers of this nature, we're not going to have a hospital in a few years. Mrs. Casey, we don't know what she may look out the window and see up in her neighborhood, quite honestly, and that within itself is scary. It could change the whole character of an entire neighborhood. So as far as I'm concerned, I think that this is, I still think that this is definitely a step in the right direction. People are concerned as far as employees up there, it's a major employer of the Medford community, but I'd rather see people that are employed up there have an opportunity to go work for some entity on Lawrence Road that's a healthcare facility than get it. facility than get a pink slip, close its doors, and now they're collecting unemployment. I think it's the way lesser of two evils. So for all those reasons, plus, I think we're in good hands with the leadership at the Lawrence Memorial Hospital right now. I think it's the premier time to move forward, because with all due respect to people out there that may be against this, this might be the only thing that keeps that building alive, vibrant, and accessible. And let's not forget about another thing. Urgent cares. 1984, you didn't even hear of urgent care. 1995, you didn't even hear of urgent care. Urgent care is servicing just as many patients a day, if not more, am I correct, than the emergency rooms in this entire area. People don't want to have to wait three hours to get a quick, two stitches on their finger, because they cut a piece of meatloaf or something at their house. They want to go into urgent care. They're in and out within 45 minutes an hour. That's what most of them pride themselves on. We have one right up here at the Lawrence Memorial site that's open up until, I believe, seven o'clock at night.
Yes.
Winchester Hospital is opening them up everywhere. You can go to Wilmington and get in the Winchester urgent care. You can go, I believe it's Redding, there's another urgent care.
We have an urgent care in Redding as well as at LMHS.
Exactly. So the trends are changing, and for us to sit here and not obviously look at the statistical data, I'm not saying that we're doing that, but I think this is very unique, because I think, based upon the conversations that have been behind this rail over the past few years regarding this merger, as you said, since 2012, I think we're all cognizant of that fact for the Medford residents, because I've already heard from people over on Sampson Road and on the backside of the hospital, where the Lawrence Memorial Hospital and nursing home agreed to grow bushes recently and bring in bushes to protect some of the integrity of the neighborhood.
One point of clarification.
I know, it was an original agreement from the nursing home that was built. I know that.
On the issue with the bushes-
It was an agreement.
No, no, no. The unfortunate part about that, the folks at the nursing home cut the bushes down by mistake.
I understand that.
Or whatever, and it was at the behest of the residents that forced, it forced the issue for which the hospital, the nursing home, had to put the bushes back.
Correct.
It's no fault of the residents.
I didn't say that. I'm not sure why you would insinuate that.
Well, you indicated through a mutual agreement. There was no mutual agreement.
It was a mutual agreement originally in the original plans with the city of Medford, back when that nursing home was built, when you were on the Medford City Council.
I understand that, but you just said now, because it wasn't-
We made our point of clarification.
Counsel, we're on the same page here. We're on the same page here. So like I said, that's it. I think we have to continue to endorse this plan. I think this city council should go on record, sending another letter to the new attorney general that the city council supports this merger with Partners. And at some point, if the attorney general will not allow that to go through, I would personally recommend the board and the powers to be to start pursuing other relationships with other hospitals that may be smaller, that the attorney general will allow to pass, because that's the only future I think we have here, having a medical facility in the Lawrence Road area, so.
Thank you. Point of information, Counselor Penta.
I believe it was this council that made a request that have either Maury Healy or someone from her office attend a city council meeting to explain that position, and I believe also a request to have someone from the hospital to be here. I don't want to be that presumptuous to say to go ahead and support it, because the new plan may not be advantageous to the Lawrence Memorial Hospital.
Well, if you notice in the, if you notice in the paperwork that was filed by the judge, they didn't even talk about the North Shore. It was all about the South Shore. And I would say, given the, given the relationship of the North Shore area with the folks in Boston, I would say there'd be more palatable, sorry, to seeing this side of the merger go through. And as a community, I think we owe it to the workers, and as you stated, the nurses and everyone else up there, to support. If we really believe, like I do, and I'm not saying we all do, but if we really believe the Lawrence Memorial Hospital's going to be closed within a few years if a merger doesn't take place, then I think it's our job and duty to continue, ask them to continue the negotiations and the discussions, and that's it.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Dr. McDonald.
Just with two points, Mr. President, and the first one would be to thank this council so much for that vote at the end of 2013, which was seven to zero, to support the work we're doing to strengthen Lawrence Memorial Hospital and a network with Partners Healthcare. There's no question from our observation that the future for any community hospital is to be strong and a larger network, and we're no different in Medford about that. And we have a tremendous opportunity with the talent we have at Lawrence over time, still there now, and the location that it is, the support of this great city. It's really, it's going to make a big difference. But the vote here at the end of 2013 was a big factor in pushing us forward as much as we got, because it is about the community desiring to have a community hospital. And I have to say, April 1st, 1924, is when we opened up, 90th birthday, we had it last April, we had a little birthday party in the lobby, 90 years old.
Thank you, Mr. ...
I'd like to make a motion to send that same exact letter that we sent out to the authorities at the past, I believe it was to the attorney general, as well as the other agencies that were involved in the merger, the same letter to the new attorney general, where the leadership has changed in the AG's office, and I'd like to have a roll call vote on that.
On the motion of Counselor Camuso to send a letter to the AG in support of resolution of this matter-
It's the same letter we sent that we-
It was to support the merger.
It was supporting the merger in its, not in the specifics of it, but in the-
Spirit and principle.
The principles that were being spoke about.
Very good. So on that motion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And amendment request from Counselor Penta.
That the motion also be amended to read that the Medford City Council supports an immediate licensure approval for the Lawrence Memorial Hospital. How do we say it? You know what I'm trying to say. Rather than having it approved, then you have five years to work within it, that the license is effective for the hospital immediately to become interactive with the partners. What would the proper terminology?
That would be fine. No, that the urging here is that the discussions for a merger go forward and that, under one license, and that the license be effective immediately upon-
Upon agreement.
...effective date of the merger.
Yep.
Thank you very much. So on that amendment by Counselor Penta, Ms. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counselor Caviolo.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Vice President Longo Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Penta.
Yes.
President De La Ruzso. Yes, seven of the affirmative, none negative, if the motion passes.
Counselor Camuso. Why we're under suspension, we had a meeting last week regarding Wendy's. I move to take 15-309, 15-336, and 15-337, two appointments of Medford residents, why we're under suspension.
Petitions, President, on the motion of Counselor Camuso for suspension of the rules, all those in favor, all those opposed, suspension to take petitions, presentations, and similar matters, and communications from the mayor. 15-309, petition by Wendy's Restaurant, 3:30 middle sex after amend outdoor dining license. Would the representatives of Wendy's please make themselves present before the podium? And I believe it was Counselor Caraviallo, Chair of the Licensing Committee, presided over that portion of the subcommittee meeting. Counselor Caraviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we had a meeting regarding Wendy's, and they had requested some changes be made to some of the things that we agreed to, and if I can read them to you. I think last week, when we voted on this, the gentleman who came up had given us information that they were going to be closing at eight, and now we find they'll close at 10. And there were some changes, but if I can read you what the changes, modifications have been made. Patio hours of operation extended to 10:00 PM to coincide with the hours of operation of the inside dining room. The patio area shall be fenced and equipped with gates that will be locked when it is not in open use, in general, specifically after 10:00 PM, in lieu of installing the top. Umbrellas for tables will be taken in each night. Patio area will be lighted to meet or exceed the minimum state standards for access and egress with outside lighting where public is invited or accommodated. Outdoor seating license will be reviewed in six months from the initial date of opening of the outdoor seating area to the public to ensure that there are no issues with the operation. And listen, we did meet on this, and I think we're all in agreement, Mr. President.
So on the motion for approval by Counselor Caviolo, all those in favor.
Yes.
I'm waiting for promptings.
Here's what we agreed to last week at the meeting.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Penta.
Number 2B, the lighting. Can you explain, where is this lighting going to be?
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Chad Adams. I'm with Wendy's Company. My address is 240 General Warren Boulevard, Melvin, Pennsylvania. The lighting will become from predominantly the existing light fixtures that are on the site. We discussed briefly what the foot candles are. It's an average foot, 4.0 foot candles across the entire patio surface, which is well in excess of what the minimum standards are for outdoor seating and accessways per state codes and requirements.
Just on that issue right there, you're going to have that shooting off the building, or are these going to be individual stanchions shooting down?
We have building lightings, recessed soffit lightings that shine down and are completely shielded from view, illuminate the immediate area below the building surface, and we have the existing parking lot lights that are out there right now, existing, that shine that level of light across where the patio area is going to be.
So through the chair, if you're saying that you're going to shut the lights off at X amount of time-
No, no. We didn't say we're going to shut the lights off.
Well, I thought the whole idea was to give you-
What if-
Go ahead.
What the gentleman said, even though the dining room closes at 10, they don't shut the lights in the dining room. All the lights in the whole building will remain on.
That's inside the building. I'm talking about outside.
And outside. No lights shut down.
So then how does that complete the purpose, as Counselor Marks alluded to in the beginning, of people just coming in there and wanting to hang around, because they're going to see the lights on outside?
There's going to be a gate, locked gate. We have a locked gate now, which we didn't have before. They agreed to put a gate in there with a lock, that will be locked when the dining room closes. I think we were all in agreement with that last week also.
Point of further clarification, Counselor Knight.
I also believe that the gentleman represented the fact that they do have closed-circuit surveillance cameras out there, so that employees would not have to go outside if, in fact, someone was breaking the rules, jumped over the fence, that they wouldn't put themselves in danger, that they'd have an opportunity to call the law enforcement without actually having to go out there and confront individuals that may or may not be obeying the no trespassing signs or the no trespassing policy that they have in place after hours.
I happen to remember the police chief being present at that meeting last week. Counselor Penta, you all set?
Go ahead.
Vice President Longo Kern.
Thank you, President De La Ruzso. With regards to the lighting, then, for an extra two hours, I know that there was issue with the units that are going to be built. Is there going to be some sort of way to direct the light, so it's not in residential, you know, homes, or apartments, condos, whatever's going, going to be built there?
The lighting right now, based on the existing photometric plans, I believe is at half a foot candle at the property lines. My engineer, Mr. Donato, could speak to that more directly, but the majority of the light is all contained within the boundaries of the property, as I believe is per code and ordinance.
Anthony Donato with Boulder Engineer. I just wanted, Counselor Knight had asked for a copy of the lighting plan, which I had submitted last week, so, you know, it does show that there's, you know, there's no limited spillage at the property lines, and the patio lights in the front, development's in the back, correct, so?
Well, there's no development there yet.
Right. I didn't know how the lights were shining and which direction from the plan, so that's all I'm asking, to make sure, you know, when the units are built, that the light is directed, so it's, you know, obviously not in somebody's home till 10 o'clock at night, now that we're talking the extra two hours, especially.
Well, just to clarify, there are no additional lighting being placed on the site specifically for the patio. We have building lighting that's, basically, the lighting we have now in the building is sort of a wash that goes over the mansard, if you will, and spills down. The lighting that we're going to replace that with is a recessed soffit light that's tucked up in the soffit and shines directly down onto the walkways. The remainder of the lighting is going to come from existing sightlights that are already been present, have been present for the past 10, 12 years, however long the restaurant's been open.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair, Counselor Marks.
Mr. President, I'm amenable to this compromise, and I just want to make sure that the six-month review is still in place.
That is in the agreement.
I just want to make sure that's still part of the paper.
So that is clear, that that was part of the agreement that came out of subcommittee, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So the Chair-
Recommends approval.
Chair has on the motion of-
With the six-month review that's in there.
Yes, absolutely. Read the six-month review. Absolutely.
I understand what that means. So on the motion of Counselor Caviolo with the six-month review, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yes.
I know, Counselor Knight probably has one too, but 15-336, I believe we have Ms. Beatrice here.
We have those under, were brought under suspension by Counselor Camuso, so we're going to take those items presently. 15-336, communications from the mayor to the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, City Hall, Medford, Mass. 02155. Dear Mr. President and councilors, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body confirm the reappointment of Mrs. Judith Beatrice of 49 Wyman Street, Medford, as Commissioner of Trust Funds. Very truly yours, Michael J. McGlynn, Mayor. Counselor Camuso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very happy that the mayor has brought forth the two names he has this evening, Mrs. Beatrice, as well as Mr. Jim Tirani, who have been serving in this capacity and doing a great job, and I move approval on the paper before us.
On the motion of approval, Counselor Camuso, just to make note, for those who have followed these matters in the past, the council has requested that resumes be presented for new candidates for these positions, and at the original point of approval of both of these people, they presented themselves before the council and presented in packets that were recorded by the city clerk their resumes, indicating their suitability for these positions. So on the motion of approval, Counselor Camuso, Counselor Marks.
We have Beatrice here tonight. Would you mind coming up and, Judy, I'm sorry, Judy?
Judith Beatrice.
Judy.
Hi, Judy.
Good evening. Very nice to be here. Thank you very much. Just to give you a report since the last time I saw you. The council, our commissioners, as you know, our major responsibility is to protect perpetual care for the cemetery and also to fiduciary responsibility for those funds that are pooled, that have been given by various citizens for awards and requests. I'm happy to report that over the past three years, we have changed our investment management system, our advisors. We have increased our allocation to protect us from the downside of the marketplace, but also to ensure that over time, we're still delivering the amount of income needed, which we always request for 200,000. Boston Hill Advisors is our new investment advisor. We've had a very good year. We've actually done 8%, 18% since they came on board, and we are, our bond portfolio, which is the major piece of what we need to derive our income, which we give away every year, not give away, we give back to you, the cemetery and perpetual care, has now a yield of about 3% with a duration of only three years, which is excellent, given the fact that the interest rates are going to be going up hopefully soon, and that our bond market won't be that affected negatively. So, thank you very much. Mr. Tirani gives his apology. He could not change his schedule tonight to be present. I'll give this to the clerk. He can have a call.
So on the motion of approval, Counselor Camuso, all those in favor?
Mr. President?
Counselor Marks.
Are we approving which one, just?
Of Judith Beatrice.
Just Judith Beatrice, okay.
On that motion of approval by Counselor Camuso, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mrs. Beatrice. 15-337, to the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, City Hall, Medford, Mass. 02155. Dear Mr. President and councilors, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body confirm the reappointment of Mr. James Tirani of 248 Forest Street, Medford, as Commissioner of Trust Funds. Very truly yours, Michael J. McGlynn, Mayor. Mr. Tirani was unable to attend the meeting- meeting this evening. However, uh, in the past, he has presented himself before the council for his original appointment and has presented his resume as requested by the council. So on the motion of approval by Consul Camusso, seconded by Consul Marks?
Mr. President, if I could, I, I know, uh, Mr. Tirani would like to, uh, appear before the council. So I would ask that this be tabled until Mr. Tirani could make it up to our meeting. Uh, we, we did, uh, at some point have a rule of this council that, uh, the vetting process include, uh, that, uh, members of these boards appear before the Medford City Council. We didn't make any stipulation whether it was a reappointment or not, that they appear before the council, and I would ask that we stick to the rules that, uh, were adopted several years ago, uh, for the vetting process. And even if it's just, uh, allowing someone to come up and say a few words, as, uh, was just, uh, done, Mr. President, I think that suits not only this council, but members of this community as well.
On the motion to table, all those in favor?
Mr. President?
Consul Camusso.
Um, please record me in opposition to the table, and I was ready to move on this this evening, but, uh, that's with the council.
On the motion to table?
Uh, Mr. President, please record me in opposition.
As well, it's, please record me in opposition as well. I spoke with Mr. Tirani. He answered my questions and concerns that I had.
So on the motion of Consul Marks to table?
Roll call vote.
The roll call has been requested to table.
Mr. President?
Consul Marks.
Just if I could, you know, I, I, I find it troubling, Mr. President, that, uh, you know, certain members of this council speak of, uh, any appointments that this council has to have a vetting process in place. Uh, and then when we, uh, go to move towards a vetting process, uh, councilors wanna waive that process. Um, you know, so I, I, I just find it troubling, and it, it, no one's against Mr. Tirani. I know him very well, uh, Mr. President, and I've known him for a lot of years, and I know he's a very capable person. But once we establish a process, uh, we should stick by it. And the reason why we established that process years ago is because, uh, there were people just being reappointed without the council actually even ever, uh, knowing who these people are, and, uh, secondly, uh, knowing if, uh, the job is being done on behalf of the residents of this community. And I think that's why it was established at this time. Uh, we had, uh, one of our own, Consul Penta. When his reappointment came to, uh, the, um, Brooks Estates, it was questioned by a member of this council whether or not someone we serve with should be put back on the board and where the vetting process is. And now we wanna just allow people to come through, uh, without the process in place. So, I, I'm a little taken back by that, and I would hope that, you know...
Thank you, Consul.
When, when we speak as a council, we mean what we say, Mr. President, and not just do lip service.
On the motion of Consul Marks to table, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, please call the roll.
Consul Camusso?
No.
Consul Caviolo?
Yes.
Consul Knight?
No.
President Longo Kern?
Yes.
Consul Marks?
Yes.
Consul Penta?
Yes.
Yes, on the vote of, uh, five, in the affirmative to negative, uh, the motion to table is sustained. On the motion of Consul Knight to take a paper under suspension, all those in favor? All those opposed? 15-3-38, officer, offered by Consul Knight, be resolved, the Medford City Council recommend Tufts University and its janitorial service provider, DTZ, reassess their current reorganization plan, and in the process, make every effort to ensure and maintain current staffing levels for the janitors assigned to the Medford Somerville campus. Consul Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Uh, just a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to a forum at Tufts University. It was put on by the, uh, Tufts Labor Coalition, Mr. President. And at that forum, uh, the topic of discussion was the Tufts University's reorganization plan for their janitorial service providers. And as the forum went on, um, the presentation was made by the administration that would show that one-third of the janitorial staff would be eliminated based upon the reorganization plan, Mr. President. So there are 91 jobs or so up at Tufts University, uh, that are doing janitorial work, and, uh, the current reorganization plan would call for the elimination of 30 of those positions, Mr. President. Um, as the forum went on, there was much discussion about the reason for the need for a reorganization, Mr. President, why the reorganization was necessary, and the reasoning that was given was that the reorganization was necessary only for the fact that they need to maintain sustainability. Now, Tufts University, Mr. President, is a university that charges $62,000 per year plus. They're the 24th most expensive college in the United States of America, and they're undergoing a $49 million expansion project right now, Mr. President. So I don't think sustainability is really an issue for Tufts University. Um, one of the things that was presented at this forum was the fact they're going to cut staff so that they can bring in equipment, and that's all well and good, but I, I think an investment in equipment and a divestment in the workforce is misguided and inappropriate, Mr. President. The 30 people that are gonna lose their jobs eat at our sandwich shops, they go on Main Street, they buy goods, they spend their hard-earned dollars here in our community. That coupled with the fact that they're some of the lowest-paid workers at Tufts University, uh, leads me to believe that Tufts University's plan is misguided. Um, so I'm asking my council colleagues here this evening to join me in supporting this resolution, which would ask Tufts University to maintain current staffing levels, uh, upon the reorganization plan. Um, and, and looking at, you know, the, the workforce up there, Tufts University's in the process, in a construction phase, building their campus, but at the same time, they're gonna cut one-third of the workforce, Mr. President, that's responsible for keeping it clean. I think it's a misguided policy, Mr. President, and it's gonna cost people their jobs. These people make between $13.80 and $14.60 an hour. So, I, I don't think that, um, you know, Tufts University's historical approach and, uh, the founding principles of social justice are being taken into consideration at this point in time with this plan, Mr. President. And I'd ask that my colleagues in the council support me. Um, we have some of the affected individuals right here with us this evening who may or may not lose their job. They don't know right now because Tufts is keeping them in the dark. Um, the, 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 the best that they've been told is that any cuts to their job will be handled with sensitivity. And, and that's where we are, Mr. President. So, I'm asking my colleagues to join me to support this resolution so that these people here in the front row don't lose their job, Mr. President.
So on the motion of approval by Consul Knight, Consul Caviolo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I, I hope that, you know, uh, in this, um, reorganization, that no Medford residents, uh, lose their jobs. I mean, uh, Tufts is a, is a large employer of Medford residents, and, um, maintaining the staffing level was, you know, is, is important. And, like I say, I would hate to see any Medford residents, uh, lose their job in this, Mr. President. Thank you.
And we actually have a Medford resident here in the audience that would like to speak on the matter, Mr. President, uh, if the council would be so, uh, kind to indulge.
Please, uh, if you would, uh, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mina Perez, and I live in One Lightning, Grand Avenue in Medford.
I'm gonna interpret if that's okay with the council.
Estoy aquí porque no quiero perder mi trabajo. Tengo miedo.
I'm here because I don't wanna lose my job. I am scared.
Y mis compañeros están acá también.
And my coworkers who are here with me as well.
Trabajo en Tufts University como janitor.
You, I, I work in Tufts University as a janitor.
Y Tufts tiene planes de eliminar 35 trabajos en Tufts.
Tufts has, uh, plans to eliminate 35 janitor positions at Tufts.
No es justo los, los, los recortes. Afectan a muchas familias.
It's not just, uh, the, uh, cuts are gonna affect many families.
Y estoy aquí para pedir su apoyo, para ayudar a parar esos recortes.
And we're here to ask for your support to help us stop some of these, uh, cuts, these cuts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, take, uh...
¿Quiénes están viviendo in, in Medford? ¿Algunos? Sí?
This is the person that came to speak in behalf of the resident.
Thank you.
So on the motion of approval by Consul Knight, uh, Consul Penta.
Um, I, I'm just a little bit perplexed on, on the motion, to be honest with you, because we are now asking to get ourselves involved in a private institution's right to do whatever they want, and the social justice part of it, for which I understand, is very compelling, not knowing whether the jobs are going to be here, the jobs are not going to be there. But I, I've never seen the Medford City Council make the, the same argument for employees within this building, whether they're going to get laid off or not going to get laid off. And, you know, this is not within our purview. If you, if you, if you're looking for a, a vote that basically says it's not right, so be it. I, I've never seen Tufts University come down to this podium and tell us what to do, how to run our city. It's not their job, it's not our job to be telling them what to do. Do we feel bad about it? Sure we do. But I, I don't think this is, belongs within the realm of, of the Medford City Council. If this, if the council individually wants to take it upon himself and write a letter to the school and indicate to the school that, you know, uh, to, to the new president, Barbara Rubel, the communic- uh, the public relations lady, you know, that we don't think this is right, so be it. But the fact of the matter is, they are a private institution. They don't come under any control of this Medford City Council. And for us to go out of our way to try to say, you know, I would hope that they would save, uh, whatever their jobs might be, so be it. But I don't see them coming down here and telling us how to run our government. Mrs. Beatrice just came up here. I don't see them coming down here and telling her how to invest those monies that she has a responsibility and the trust fund for. I don't see that happening. I, I, I just think we're going into a territory that's, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's never been charted before. I, I, I just don't think that, you know, it's gonna serve any purpose other than the fact of Tufts University, they get a, a resolution from the Medford City Council. Well, I don't know, is it Somerville City Council? Are they doing the same thing? I don't know.
April 9th.
With that being said, Mr. President, I, 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 I just don't think we're going in the right direction in this, and, 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 you know, while I feel bad, and I don't know whether the jobs are going to be cut or not. I mean, if they're having such a large expansion, common sense would tell me if they're going to be expanding more of their footprint, why would they be laying off rather than not hiring more to take care of the buildings of their new footprint? I, I don't know. And, uh, I, I, with, with that being said, I just can't support this right now. I, I, I just don't think it, I don't think we have everything in front of us that we really need for, for the facts. Uh, I, I think it's emotional right now as it stands, and I can understand that. But if you're spending all this kind of money for all this expansion, which is in the multi-millions of dollars, well, I mean, why should they even be considered to be losing their jobs? I don't know. Maybe we should have somebody from Tufts University come down here and explain it to us, and then maybe the vote will have more of a substance rather than the emotion that it's going to have right now at the podium.
Mr. President? Also, Consul?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Consul Camusso.
Uh, first of all, I would like to, um, go on record in support of this. There's Medford residents that are employed, um, through this, Medford taxpayers, uh, that's number one. Number two, and, uh, I don't mean to say this inflammatory, but the gentleman that just spoke brings up issues about the federal government after we, Common Core we talked about, which we have no jurisdiction over. We talked about probably 27 times here at the Medford City Council. We've talked about, uh, oil coming from other countries. We've talked about, uh, many issues that we have no jurisdiction over. This is, uh, well within the right of any city councilor to, to bring forward. Uh, just earlier, within the last hour, we talked about the nurses that may be losing their jobs at Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and doctors. So to say that this is going on uncharted territory, as our fine city solicitor would say, that's fiction. So I do support you, Consul Knight, and I support the working people that go to Tufts University every day, and they do a fine job, you know? Too many things around here are getting taken over by machines. You drive on the tollbooths now. You drive through with your little fast pass. How many people lose their jobs? You go to the touchbank now. You go to the ATM instead of using people that actually, uh, uh, work the counter. Technology is good, but at the end of the day, you need people to do the jobs. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I support these working men and women that are here this evening, Mr. President. Uh, I do not know the language of their contract, but, uh, in principle, as we talked about earlier, in principle, I support them wholeheartedly, and I support Consul Knight, but to, uh, to talk that we, we're going down, uh, uncharted territories, I mean, I'd like to just take an hour to go back and look at the records of just this calendar year and see, uh, how many things we've talked about that, uh, have no jurisdiction of the Medford City Council. So, uh, so I do support the council that brought this forward this evening.
Thank you, Consul. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Robert Cappucci, 71 Evans Street. Uh, I deeply respect the concern for jobs that Consul Knight is bringing before the city council, but with all due respect, when I got up and spoke earlier asking questions about jobs, the council instituted a point of personal, uh, information or, or whatever to have the president come back and speak, you know, when he's more prepared. So I would just request respectfully that, uh, before taking a vote on this, that Consul Knight or another councilor offer that the president or whomever the authoritative body is of Tufts University to come down and, and speak their side of it, uh, at a time when they're prepared as, as well, because the, the points are similar. I was trying to argue for jobs, like... Point of information, Mr. Penta? Point of information, Consul Knight.
Tufts University's plan's not in flux. Tufts, Tufts University's plan's not static. It's been defined. It's been established. They're telling us what they're doing, and they're looking to do it in May. So, you know, these changes usually happen at commencement when there are no students around, Mr. President. This is a student-led effort. There are students in the Tufts Labor Coalition that have gotten together, that have contacted me, because they need support. They need support. Students that live in Medford, that go to Tufts University, that go to that school, that is standing in support of these working people, of these working people who make between $13.60 and $14.80 an hour, Mr. President. They need their jobs. They need their jobs, Mr. President. This resolution will send a message to Tufts University that we support working men and women. That's what this resolution will do, Mr. President. So, well, the plan at the hospital, nobody knows what's going on. Mr. McDonald doesn't know what's going on. Mara Haley doesn't know what's going on. Nobody knows what's going on. We right here know what's going on. The administration has drawn their line in the sand, and they've said what they're gonna do. So it's not comparing apples to apples.
Mr. President, point of information? Thank you for your point of information. Point of information, Consul Camusso.
Just a point, um, and then, and then, just real quick, but, um, the city of Somerville is having the same type of resolution slash, um, um, not hearing, but, um, the individuals as well as representatives from the city of Somerville are meeting on April 9th on this very same matter.
Thank you for that point of information, councilors. Sir, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the very reasons that Consul Knight stated that we don't know, was the reasons I came up here and asked a couple of questions since he was here, the president of Hallmark, and suggested that we've had conversations, was the very reason I asked a couple of questions, because we don't know. All I'm asking here is for, uh, with all due respect, a little less duplicity, and ask for both sides to be heard from, like he was asking before when I asked a couple of, of small questions. And with, with all due respect, in, in this election year...
Point of information, Consul Knight.
I think the job he's trying to defend is his own.
That's a mischaracterization of what I said. I wasn't trying to prevent him from asking questions. What I was trying to do was keep us focused on the resolution that was at hand, Mr. President. The resolution at hand was the issues at 72 Terrace Road and Mrs. Michelle Casey and the noise. The issue wasn't the hospital merger. All right, that door was opened, but I felt as though it was inappropriate and unprofessional for Mr. McDonald to be put on the spot here when he wasn't here to talk about that. He came down here out of his goodwill and his own personal volition at the request of this council to address that issue, Ms. Casey's house. Nothing more, nothing less.
Thank you, Consul.
Mr. President, with all due respect...
And I must take responsibility for those...
Absolutely. Coupled with the fact that the gentleman sat in the audience with the man for an hour before he got up to talk on the microphone, those questions could have been asked then as well.
Hey, that was my fault, uh, for, uh, improperly, uh, administering that portion of the meeting. Sir, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect, that gentleman sitting in, in the audience, I didn't know who he was.
We're at the last seven meetings that he was here.
No, no, uh, I'm sorry. That's not true.
So if you could direct yourself to the chair.
The last time, yeah, through the chair, Mr. President, that, that's not true what he said. Uh, the last time I was here for a meeting with, uh, the president of Hallmark Health, it was the CEO, Mr. Michael Sachs. It wasn't President McDonald. Be- while President McDonald was speaking, I had to go ask his colleague what his name was. Uh, with, with all due respect, uh, this council, through the chair, asked a question about the merger. This is an open podium. When that was brought up for public discussion, I'm fully, uh, privileged, being a tax-paying citizen of this community, to come up and ask questions when this council brings up the issue that the council brought up, not me. So with all due respect, Consul Knight, through the chair, you're wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cappucci. Uh, Vice President Longo Kern.
Thank you, President Delaruso. I, I agree with both Mr. Cappucci and Consul Knight. I believe that Mr. McDonald was here. We had the opportunity to ask some questions. You opened the door. I believe Mr. Cappucci should have been able to ask some questions. But I also believe Consul Knight has the right to bring this up. This is an issue that's affecting Medford residents who have jobs at Tufts... This is an issue that's affecting Medford residents who have jobs at Tufts University. It's a, you know, we harp on Tufts University a lot. Every councilor has brought up issues or wants Tufts University to do more, so I think it's well in the purview of what we can speak about. You have a lot of people here tonight, and you have 35 jobs that might be lost, and that's, that's something that, you know, Counselor Knight and the rest of the council, we should speak out and ask Tufts University to rethink their plan. I definitely support this in principle, and I support, you know, maintaining the jobs that are currently the way they staff them now. So I agree that both issues should be on the floor. I believe this is a good issue, and glad it came before the council, glad to educate the people of what's going on, and I support it. I second the resolve.
On the motion to second by Counselor Longo Kern, Counselor Carvillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this has gone to a whole new level here. I mean, all these people are looking for just a little bit of support here. We supported Lawrence Memorial a few, 10, 15 minutes ago about the jobs up there. I think these people deserve the same respect. I mean, we're not forcing Tufts to keep them, but showing them that, you know, we are behind them, the same way we were behind the Lawrence Memorial Hospital also.
Thank you for that, Counselor. And sir, you wish to address, please, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Chris DeVito, 67 West Street. I would like to add my voice in support of Counselor Knight's resolution. If you all remember back, less than 20 years ago, late 90s, Tufts laid off a lot of janitors from its actual employment roles, and then hired the company, I believe, that these people may work for, the second company, you know, following up. So they outsourced their janitorial staff. Now they're following in second way and downsizing even more. And I can say this as a Tufts alum, because I'm getting bombarded with solicitations from the university to give money, and I'm really disappointed in actually the direction they've been going lately. So I fully support this, and I hope it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the motion for approval by Counselor Knight, seconded by Vice President Longo Kern, on that motion, Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think anyone behind this reel wants to see anyone lose jobs. So I don't think there's one person behind this reel. The question I do have, Mr. President, is I agree with the comments that were made that at the very least, we're hearing one side of the story. It would be helpful to make an educated and informed decision to also hear from the administration of Tufts University, to hear what their reorganizational chart and plan calls for. I, as one member, think that would be helpful. I would also ask, what exactly is the resolution we're voting on? The language itself, is it exactly how it reads? So we're voting on that exact language, okay? And, Mr. President, I would also state that, you know, we're talking about staffing levels, and Tufts University has every right to take a look at their staffing levels and make determinations whether they believe they have too much staff, not enough staff, whatever needs to be done. And I would say the same applies to the city of Medford. If you look at our staffing level in our police department, we're at an all-time low. If you look at the fire department, we're at an all-time low. The DPW, we're at an all-time low right now in staffing right now. So I think when we talk about staffing levels and want to put the onus on a particular private entity and say, "We think you should leave your staffing levels at this," then I think we also have to look in-house and say, "Why are our staffing levels so very low? Why are we outsourcing work that could be done by our DPW? Why are we outsourcing parking enforcement that could be done by our police department? Why are we outsourcing?" And I would like to have that discussion sometime too, Mr. President, because it's nice to look outside of what's happening in your own community, but if you take a look in your community and see what's going on with low staffing levels, outsourcing, I think, you know, that, in my opinion, deserves a much better look than currently is being discussed at this particular point. And I am supportive, I will vote to support the workers. However, I think we do need, Mr. President, Barbara Rubel or someone from Tufts University, Barbara comes up here quite often and is very familiar with this council, to at least give us something, whether she wants to appear before us or in writing, what their organizational plan is. I, as one member, would find that very helpful, Mr. President, and I would look forward to future meetings with the same vigor on our own staffing levels, and maybe to hold the mayor accountable, maybe members of this council that support the mayor step by step by step, to also hold the mayor accountable for our low levels of manning in police, fire, and DPW, and not look at an institution and say, "Why are you doing this?" Look at the mayor and say, "Mr. Mayor, why are you doing this to our community, Mr. Mayor, leaving us at dangerously low levels of fire and police protection in our community?" So I would like to see a little emphasis on that also, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Marks. So on the motion by Counselor Knight, as amended by Vice President, seconded by Vice President Longo Kern, Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, I'm looking at the recommendation, and I will admit that it does have merit. There's a word in here that I didn't realize was in here. I was reading, and maybe I read it wrong. I have no problem in saying that the Medford City Council respectfully recommends, because I think that, I think that has a different tone to it, okay? And the word reassess is not telling them exactly to do it, but I think it's implied. So with that being said, and I agree with Counselor Marks, you know, I think this is, it's a good resolution, because again, like I said, I don't think we're out to hurt anybody, but the fact of the matter is, you know, we have to look at our own building, what goes on in this entire building here between and amongst ourselves. We have positions that are understaffed, and we have positions maybe that are overstaffed. I don't know. But as far as that goes, I would like to make, after the word "Medford City Council", put the word "respectfully" recommends, because usually that's what a Medford City Council resolution does, they respectfully recommend.
As the counselor who offered the motion, so we're going to add the word respectfully to recommend. Thank you, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
So on the motion for approval by Vice President, by Counselor Knight, as seconded by Vice President Longo Kern, roll call has been requested. Counselor Marks.
We could just add a B paper that we get a response back from either Barbara Rubel or the Tufts administration on their organizational plan, and also get some feedback from Tufts University itself. I have nothing in front of me, other than the great comment that was made by Counselor Knight, but I have nothing in front of me from Tufts University explaining what their reorganizational plan is. And does it stop with the janitorials, or does it add to police, fire, and anything else that's on the campus? I don't know what the impact is. This may be just one portion of an overall, larger organizational picture that I'm not privy to.
Very good. So on that main motion, with the roll call, and we're also going to add a B paper, which will be voted on simultaneously by Counselor Marks, to send a communique in addition to the administration via Barbara Rubel's office to inform the council of the items enumerated.
Mr. President, if I may, I believe Ms. Rubel's office would be the inappropriate place to send it. I think it might have to go to the Vice President of Administration.
So then we'll do that to the Vice President of the Tufts Labor Council Forum. The Vice President of Administration.
And I think where Barbara is the community relations person, I think she should be CC'd.
Will carbon her as well.
She's been the only face of Tufts University with this council.
She is.
For many years.
On that motion, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Camuso.
Yes.
Counselor Caviello.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Vice President Longo Kern.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Penta.
Yes.
President Delarusso. Yes, and the vote is seven affirmative, none negative. Motion passes. On the motion of Vice President Longo Kern to revert back to the regular order of business, all those in favor, all those opposed, regular order of business. 15-330 offered by Counselor Penta, be it resolved that a special birthday wish be forwarded to Alfred Valenti on his upcoming 93rd birthday. Mr. Valenti is well-known for his Valenti Ticket Agency on Valenti Way, North Station, Boston, where so many folks bought tickets for years and got excellent service in their ticket requests for sporting and family events. Counselor Penta for this great Medford citizen.
Mr. President, it's another wonderful Medford businessperson who through the years has helped so many individuals in this community make sure they got their tickets to enjoy sporting and community and family events, whether they be at the Boston Garden or other locations. So I just think it'd be a nice way to say hello, give them a recommendation, and a happy birthday.
Great guy, and thank you for that motion. On the motion of approval by Counselor Penta, Counselor Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a good thing by Counselor Penta. I know Mr. Valenti also, he's been, he helped start Coon's Fight Nights some 30 years ago. And this year is our 30th anniversary, and something that this gentleman helped start it, and I'm sure he's going to be there in a couple of weeks. And again, it's Walter's, he's a good guy.
Very good. So on the motion approved by Counselor Penta, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. 15-332 offered by Vice President Longo Kern, be it resolved that the Medford Public Schools provide to the Medford City Council what drug prevention and education programs they are offering Medford students and teachers. Be it further resolved that the Medford Public Schools begin providing additional drug prevention-based programs for our students. Be it further resolved that the Medford Public Schools begin educating our staff and teachers with regards to prevention, warning signs, and effects. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President Delarusso. Again, we speak about an important issue in this community, a crisis that is going on. I'm not really sure where to begin, you know, speaking on this specific topic, but I'll say that three weeks ago, the city council met, and we met with Team Medford, the police, members of the police department, members of the fire department, members of Armstrong Ambulance, parents of, you know, who have children that are addicted. There was representatives from the school department, and in that two-hour meeting, we discussed a whole host of problems, a whole host of ways to, things that need to be resolved, some having to do with prevention, treatment, what families go through, what, you know, those addicted go through, lack of treatment facilities, the problem with regards to the doctors prescribing, probably inappropriately, or, you know, too much. And one, we can have a meeting probably on each separate topic with different department heads and representatives, but one thing I would like to move forward with, and something that I would like to, you know, hopefully we can have a city council committee, the whole meeting very shortly, with the school department, representatives from the school department, we could, I would like to meet with the Medford City Council and have Team Medford there as well. I would like to discuss and implement more, I'm sorry, you guys are throwing me off. Yeah, it's okay, I'll wait. Oh, you're all set, okay. I think we need more prevention in our schools. We heard representatives from the school department talk about the DARE program, which I've been an advocate for for many, many years, but they mentioned that we have the DARE program for a limited basis in our fifth grade. They mentioned a few other things that are done, and to me, it's just not enough. We are facing death after death, losing friends and people losing family members. Within the last week or so, I've lost a personal friend of mine, 34-years-old, he passed away on March 27th. Over the weekend, from what I hear, another Medford resident, to me, I know I sound old, but a baby, a 23-year-old died on Easter morning. We need to make sure that we do whatever we can so that our children will not take the first steps that so many have taken, which we've heard at the vigil, it takes one time to shoot up heroin and you become addicted. How do we prevent our younger generation, which is, I know is only one part of the puzzle, one part of the problem, but obviously, to me, who has, who have children in the schools, Mr. Counselor Knight, Counselor Camuso, you're going to have grandchildren in the schools very soon, Counselor Penta. Counselor Marks, Counselor Caviello has grandchildren. Counselor Delarusso, I know you care about the topic too, I'm not sure if you have nieces and, you know, school-aged nieces, but having the DARE program, it's just not enough. I did probably two hours of research, very minimal research, over the last week and a half with regards to, you can go on Google, and there are programs, there are free pamphlets and booklets and CDs, ways to educate our youth. We have the life skills training, there's online courses our teachers can take for prevention. There are free pamphlets with regards of how to educate grades three through six, how to educate our high school students, how to create youth and adults, give them facts about drugs so that they can make better informed decisions and live a drug-free life. We need, we need this. I spoke to, you know, one school committee member so far, and I plan on reaching out to the rest, but I think we, this is one thing that we've all come together on, we need to work together. That would be one of the next meetings I would ask, whether we do it in a subcommittee or a committee of the whole meeting, that would be one of the next meetings we have. You know, I don't think it's ever too early to start teaching your kids and the students about drugs and drug prevention and signs. Teachers need to know, they need to know how to handle students, how to teach students. So I think we can collaboratively come up with ideas and come up with ways to prevent, you know, something that has become such an issue. My daughter, you know, when my friend passed on the 27th, you know, came into the room, and it's really sad when your six-and-a-half-year-old says, "Mama, you know, what's wrong? Who died?" And that's what it's becoming. My six-and-a-half-year-old daughter asked me who died. She knew, and I had to tell her that I lost a friend. And that's one of many, I'm sure we all know people and all know, you know, young and old, we've said it before, it hits people in their teens, twenties, you know, we're losing people 50s and 60s to this epidemic. So, you know, I know we're all very passionate about it. We had an amazing meeting, two-hour-long meeting, roundtable, you know, the 10 issues that go along with it, and this is one of those pieces that we need to work on. So I would ask my colleagues that we sit down and we figure out ways to educate our students and ways to educate our teachers. I also reached out to a few teachers that I know, and just I asked, you know, what type of prevention, what type of training? Do you have a one-hour training? Do you have a week, you know, a full-day training on drug prevention, alcohol prevention? Oh, no, I haven't, the teachers I spoke to, I have no idea, I'll ask around. Obviously, that's not enough. Teachers shouldn't have to ask around of whether or not we have any training in our schools. So I'm going to let, you know, any of my other colleagues who'd like to speak on this, but there are programs, there are free programming tools out there that we need to take advantage of, and I'm sure there's grants that we can also take advantage of. That's my next research project, but I'd like to come together within the next few weeks and work on this.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And just to update the council, until we get the draft ordinance finalized for our consideration, at that point, then I'll reschedule the next meeting of the committee of the whole regarding the issue that you bring up, Madam Vice President. I know that there's a draft circulating City Hall, and I think there's just a couple key department heads sort of giving input and tweaking it before something's presented to the council for our consideration and input as well. And then we'll do that, we'll have the opportunity to focus on that in committee of the whole and see what else comes our way with all those interested parties.
If we could have the representatives from the school department that were here actually put in writing, you know, what prevention there is. I mean, I was taking notes, but I know we have fifth grade DARE, and I know they mentioned one other thing, but if they could put that in writing, what is provided to our schools, our teachers, and our students, so that we can, you know, improve on that, that would be helpful.
Very good. Counselor Carvillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few weeks ago, we asked for the DARE offices to be reinstated back in the schools. I haven't seen anything happen as of yet. I mean, you know, every week, we procrastinate this, another person dies, two people die. I mean, how many more weeks are we going to sit and wait for something to happen, wait for something to happen? Again, even if we start with something small, we need to get something moving here. I mean, we sit here, we talk, we talk, we talk, meanwhile, people die. You know, words aren't getting anything done, Mr. President. Actions are going to start happening then. We asked for the DARE offices to be put back in the schools, and they haven't been put back in, as far as I know.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Camuso.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do want to thank Counselor Longo Kern, because a lot of this does start in the schools, and education is an important piece of this puzzle. Also, if, Mr. President, if we could ask the mayor for the update on where the ordinance is, because just in the past few weeks, individuals- is, because just in the past few weeks, individuals that attended our meetings, attended our meetings here because their loved ones were affected. We've had individuals that attended our meeting and their loved ones have passed since our meeting. So this is a serious thing, it's, it's, it's so fluid, every day, you're picking up and you're picking up the newspaper, you're reading another name. So let's get this moving. I know the mayor is working on it and it's floating around, but you know what, this is, I think, this is such an important issue, the mayor should put something out to all the department heads, give them a deadline. Here's an ordinance that you have, you have until the end of business on this day to sign off on it and at least get it back to this council. I know they're working on it, but as I just demonstrated via the example that I gave, this is something that's affecting people on a daily basis. In the past two weeks or three weeks since our meeting, there's been several people that have died as a result of this disease, so. Thank you, and on a positive note, thank you, Councilor Lugo Kern, for bringing this forward because it does all start in the very small ages in our schools.
Thank you, Councilor. Sir, you wish to speak on this, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I promise this will be the last time I come to the podium tonight. Robert Capucci, seventy-one Evans Street. Through the chair, I wanna thank Councilor Lugo Kern, Vice President, for bringing up this issue. This past Sunday, April fifth, marked twelve years to the day that my best friend died on an overdose of OxyContin that he bought illegally. And while I strongly advocate, being a former teacher, strong educational programs, teaching our youngsters the problems and the health issues and even the death that could arise through using drugs, I would like to ask that this council please place emphasis on the criminal aspect of what's going on here. Councilor Marks, in an earlier discussion, brought up low staffing, we don't have a full police force here in Medford. And Councilor Caviello brought up the DARE officer program. My question is, you know, how many people that are out there selling illegal drugs to youngsters and our students, how many of them are being arrested? If my friend, twelve years ago, you know, from the person, whoever it was, he bought illegal OxyContin from, got arrested the day before, maybe that night, he wouldn't have illegally purchased these drugs and got arrested. And if it's doctors doing it, I hope that there's some aspect of looking into them to get them arrested and losing their license. We need a strong, fully-staffed police force so that they can go out and do their job. Now, I, I'm obviously speaking out of turn, I know Chief Sacco is doing everything he can with what he has and there may be answers to the questions I'm bringing up. I'd like to know how many arrests were made in the last month, the last three months, the last year, on people selling drugs. That kind of prevention, from a legal standpoint, I think needs some emphasis as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Point of information, Vice President Lugo Kern?
Just on that note, thank you, President Delarussue. Chief Sacco and Detective Sacco were actually at our meeting and Detective Sacco's pretty on top of the situation. I mean, he spoke about arrests, he spoke about the issues that the detectives are facing, he spoke about being in court and, you know, then a whole host of issues. I mean, they are on top of it, things have to stay, change at the state level with regards to some of the laws and regulations and the classifications of fentanyl, I know that he spoke about, so he's pretty compassionate about the issue and I know he, there are arrests being made and I've witnessed it firsthand, so I just wanna, you know.
I wasn't aware of that, I just hope more arrests are being made and thank you for informing me on that, Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Joe Villione, fifty-nine Garfield Ave. And Mr. Capucci had brought up Right Turn, which is the drug counseling people in Arlington. They're now doing TV ads, Woody Geisman, he does fantastic work. We should see about him coming down to the council and speaking to the council because it's right in Arlington Center, these are people that have gone through drug problems and they're helping to educate the community and keep people straight. It's a very, very good thing. If we had public access TV, we could have these discussions every day and we could educate the public on it, but we don't have that. One of my musicians, his son died, about twenty-three years old, the grandmother found him in the bed, overdose of heroin. It is everywhere, everyone's been touched by it, my friend grieves for his son, it's just, what do you say to someone? What can you say? You just try to help them through it, but it is pervasive, it's awful. And again, this is not self-serving, we need public access TV to educate the community, we're paying for it, this crisis is a very good example of why we need it.
Councilor, sir?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Regiro, I live on eighteen Pembroke Street. I would like to advise the council to consider not just doing something, but doing something that's scientifically proven to actually work. While DARE programs have had some small positive influence, many different journals and scientific papers have shown that the DARE program has been rather ineffective. I'm looking at one right now, the Journal of Consulting and Clinical Psychology published a pretty widespread paper called Project DARE: No Effects at Ten-Year Follow-Up. Work needs to be done, obviously, heroin is a serious problem in our community, however, it's not just what we do, but why we do it and the reasons for our change. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Penta?
Mr. President, thank you, Councilor Lugo, because it does, it touches everybody. This past Friday, a good friend of the family, twenty-five years old, in New Hampshire, doesn't make any difference where it comes from, died of an overdose, okay? It's a sad situation, but I'd just like to travel back in time, if you remember when we had this mini epidemic that was going on in the schools and the elementary grade with the stamps, remember when they were licking the stamps and there was drugs in the stamps and the kids got hooked on it? I think you may have been on the school committee at the time, Councilor L. S. D., okay? And they were giving it to the kids for nothing back then, to get them hooked on it and, you know, and that's just so, such, it was a sad state of affairs back then and I think parents and the schools, everybody got involved with it and stuff like that. When you talk about education, Councilor Lugo, I think every teacher from kindergarten all the way up needs to be educated on this particular subject matter. It's an educational course, it's not English or history or social studies, it's an educational course of everyday life that's taking place in their classroom. And the child, other than having their parents at home, it's the teacher in the classroom that probably has them more at a confined time and period than any other time in their life as they're growing up. And the teachers need to recognize all the shortcomings. Now, the fact of the matter is, and I don't know, somebody else there mentioned the fact about, you know, the criminal aspect of it, and it's true, there needs to be, that component has to be attacked just as well because there has to be something that destroys the idea of having a seller give these drugs out or, and kids get themselves addicted to it and what have you. I believe that there's a law out there right now that says if you have any kind of a drug or you sell it within a thousand feet or is it five hundred feet of a school, it's a mandatory two or three years, whatever it might be. You know, there's been proponents for years going up on Beacon Hill saying that anyone who gets caught selling drugs to a student should have a mandatory five-year sentence, and there were some as high as ten years. Whether that's the issue to stop it or not, I don't know, but the fact of the matter is that they're out there selling it and there are more people using heroin now than ever before. And I think that day, it couldn't have been any more telling when that lady stood up there at that vigil and told us that she didn't lose one, but she lost two sons. And she lost a second son after he was four years clean. This is, it just doesn't go away and it's something that a parent has to live with day in and day out. We're all around this rail subject to whether it's our own kids, our grandkids, or relatives within our family, our friends outside the family. You know, it's out there and I think the police department, whether it's local, state or federal, they have a big job in their hands and what they need to do and what the judges need to do, they need to step up to the plateau. Instead of giving them a slap on the wrists or giving them suspended sentences, they need to send them away and do their job. And maybe they should build the jails in Wellesley and Newton and Lexington and the high-priced towns where a lot of these people are doing the selling and that's where they're coming from. It affects every single buddy and every single life in every single community, rich, poor, and indifferent. So I thank you, Councilor Lugo, but you know something, you know what I'd like to have you do? I'd like to put an amendment on there, I'd like to have you have the superintendent of schools report back to this council and I'd like to have you give him a time period that what he is doing within his school system with his teachers, so we all have an idea as to what's going on. And I think that puts the pressure on that, hey, if you're really serious about addressing this thing within our school system, because this council is serious about it, because we've all affected it, we've all been affected by a loss by someone, immediate or otherwise, then we're doing something about it and we wanna see it. We wanna see it in the agenda, we wanna see it in the budget of the school department and we wanna have it come and televised and publicized to every single taxpayer in this community what they should be on the lookout for, because the school department's gonna do it and the parents should be apprised of it as well.
Thank you, Councilor Penta. Councilor Camuso?
Thank you, and just an FYI, a gentleman that was at the podium just was speaking about Right Turn over in Arlington, and that's a great resource for youngsters throughout the communities around here, that's closing its doors in the very near future, moving to a faraway community. So that's another resource that people from Medford utilize and is moving on to a new facility outside of the immediate area, so just, so as quick as we're adding resources to combat the problem, resources for whatever reasons are getting depleted as well. So it's, you take ten steps forward, then it's five back, it's, and it's only getting worse. So thank you again, Councilor Lugo.
Thank you, Councilor Camuso. Councilor Knight?
Mr. President, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank Councilor Lugo for bringing the resolution forward. I certainly feel as though education's a vital component to addressing the substance abuse and the opiate abuse issue here in Medford, and maybe it's not there, maybe it's other type of programming that we can put in place for self-esteem training for individuals so that they don't have the feeling that they need to go towards drugs to escape from something, Mr. President. But education's definitely a component and public safety's a component too, there's no question about that. We need to keep our drugs off the street, Mr. President, we need to keep drugs off the street, we need to limit people's access to drugs. However, I think it's important to point out that a lot of people that sell drugs actually use drugs too, so, you know what I mean, they're not necessarily just a drug dealer, but they themselves are also addicts, Mr. President. The one component that I don't hear many people talking about is the public health aspect of this and the lack of access to care, Mr. President. So an addict that's looking for help can't find access to help, Mr. President, so they sit there and they fight and they try to get clean and they can't get clean because they have no way to get help. And then they fall back into this vicious cycle and this vicious circle again, Mr. President. So I think that there are really three components that we really need to look at, that's the education, the public safety and the public health aspect of this in order for us to tackle this epidemic and this problem in its entirety. So, you know, I can't thank Councilor Lugo enough for continuing this conversation. I think we've all been pretty vocal and pretty outspoken in terms of our position on the topic and I really do look forward to the response from the school department and also the response from the administration as to what direction the ordinance looks like and what direction the school department's going in. But with that being said, Mr. President, I support this resolution wholeheartedly and I'd move for approval.
On the motion of approval by Councilor Lugo Kern, seconded by Councilor Knight, all those in favor?
Strike that, amended that the superintendent respond back as to what his plan is for each and every one of the teachers in the school system.
As amended by Councilor Penta, that the superintendent of schools report back to the council regarding to his plans for the entire school system, for education.
Yeah, prevention, right.
And prevention. Roll call has been requested. Councilor Caviello?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could have a report back on that, on our DARE officers stuff also?
Further amended by Councilor Caviello, that the chief of police report back to the council regarding the implementation, re-implementation of the DARE officers. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Councilor Camuso?
Yes.
Councilor Caviello?
Yes.
Councilor Knight?
Yes.
Vice President Lugo Kern?
Yes.
Councilor Marks?
Yes.
Councilor Penta?
Yes.
President Delarussue? Seven and affirmative, non-negative, the motion passes. Councilor Penta?
On that particular resolution, could we also have a copy of that resolution sent to the governor's opiate, I can't think of the exact title of his commission, because what they're looking for is input from cities and towns as it relates to their concerns as it relates to that. I don't know the exact name of the commission, but he has a commission, has anybody? Is it, it's the Opiate Addiction Tax Force, because if we could send a copy of that to them and keep them apprised.
Further amended by Councilor Penta. Isn't our mayor on the MMA? Isn't he the chief of the, isn't he the head of the?
No, 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 he's just the co-chairman of a committee, but I don't know what he's doing.
He's the co-chair of the opiate committee?
Councilor Penta is as well.
No, no, I'm not on that committee, no, the mayor is.
If you could find out where that committee is through the MMA?
Well, I, when he gave that comment at the vigil, I think they said they were, he said he was working on it, I don't know what he's doing.
Yeah, but that was three weeks ago. Three weeks ago and a bunch more people died.
Okay.
All right. Fifteen dash three, thirty-three, offered by Councilor Camuso. Be resolved that the DPW install additional crosswalk signs in West Medford Square in the interest of public safety. Councilor Camuso?
Thank you, Mr. President. West Medford, the signage is lacking and residents have reached out to me over this past week or so to see if we can get additional crosswalk signs down in the immediate area near the Two Sisters, in the Seafood, I still call it the Seafood Depot, what's the name of it now, Seafood Grill, I think, but Seafood Grill, thanks, Councilor Penta. And then down the street as well, near Sunnyhurst, just the whole area, a lot of people traverse it and additional signage definitely will be very helpful. And I know Councilor Marks put something on, I believe, a few weeks ago, a B paper regarding doing the crosswalks over. So if we can make that a priority as well, because as we all know, we're all got the same emails, since this appeared on the agenda, people from the pedestrian committee have reached out to the entire council about improving crosswalks throughout the entire community. And the one recommendation that was made to me as well as all the members of the council and me personally think it was a good idea, we should be going with the new crosswalk signs, similar to the Winter Street Rotary, they're the fluorescent, real, real bright at night, so if we could send that to the DPW.
Mr. President, Madam President, thank you very much and Councilor Camuso, thank you very much for bringing this resolution forward. I'd like to add by way of a B paper, a resolution that would ask that the Department of Transportation repair the stanchions that stand between the eastbound and westbound roadways at the railroad crossing. After this winter, they took quite a beating, they're all broken, they're in disrepair. And if I remember correctly, those stanchions were installed for the purpose of improving public safety at the railroad crossing for pedestrians and vehicles alike. I think it's relevant to the topic, and, well, they all fall under the DOT now through the transportation reform. So I'd like to amend the paper, by way of a B paper, asking that the DOT take appropriate steps and the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority take the appropriate steps to repair the stanchions.
Councilor Knight, which, are you talking of West Medford?
Yes.
They just fell down, those are new. About three weeks ago, they got knocked down, they had to put a new one up there. Madam President, the reason I was on Councilor Camuso's thing here, you know, every year, the DPW just paints the crosswalks on. Other cities, you know, they use that hot paint, you know, with the, so they're like with the sand and everything, so they raise it a little bit and, why can't we do that instead of just painting them? I know Councilor Marks, it sounds like an odd idea, but maybe if we do something, you know, spend a little extra money and do it right the first time, we won't have to be doing it every year. But in other cities, they come in with the hot paint and there's like a little sand and everything and they'll stay for two or three years. So rather than just paint, if we could, you know, get them done, maybe if the city can't do it, maybe we hire an outside company to do it, if we don't have the equipment to do it. Yes.
Councilor Marks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank Councilor Camuso for bringing up this very important public safety pedestrian issue. I would also ask that we amend this to include other parts of the city as well. This is an issue throughout the community, the lack of signage. And the issue that Councilor Caviello was just mentioning is thermoplastic. And anyone that's been on the council for a number of years will remember that it was about six years ago that we painted about thirty crosswalks with thermoplastic and Councilor Caviello's a hundred percent right, it's slip-resistant, it's highly reflective, it lasts up to five years, so we don't have to worry about repainting them every year. And I thought it was a success in that that pilot program of thirty crosswalks was gonna come in that that pilot program of 30 crosswalks was going to continue. And shortly after that, the city administration discontinued using thermoplastic crosswalks, or thermoplastic, I should say. The state uses it on all state highways, so that must tell you that it's long lasting and it's highly reflective. But, in this city, we opt to put forth 50 resolutions a year to ask that our crosswalks be painted, and it's no reflection on DPW, which is understaffed, as I mentioned earlier. However, you know, we have far too many crosswalks in this community, and I think you're right. Maybe it is time that we look at bringing in a private company to assist in the painting of crosswalks. And thermoplastic would be a preference. However, I'm not sure if this administration really, to be quite frank, cares about the condition of our crosswalks or pedestrian safety, for that fact, in our community. There's been no traffic calming approaches done by this city. The last thing we did was the raised crosswalk on Winthrop Street. We were promised two additional crosswalks, one on Central Ave and one on Harvard, that are yet to be done. But, those are really the only traffic calming approaches that I can think of. And, you know, we don't have to recreate the wheel. All you need to do is look at Cambridge, and they have, under their pedestrian DPW section of their website, a whole traffic calming section about widening sidewalks, about raised crosswalks, about a host of issues on how to create pedestrian safety in a community. But, for some reason, we just keep on doing the same thing over and over again, and the administration appears to be content with that, Madam President. So, I agree with Councilor Camuso's recommendation. I would just add, if we can add, if Councilor Camuso doesn't mind, crosswalk signs in all parts of the community, because they are needed, and that thermoplastic be looked at on any painting done in this community from here on, Mr. and Madam President. May be a little more expensive, but in the long run, it's cost effective.
Motion to approve.
Councilor Caraviallo?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, during one of the meetings we had a few weeks ago, the, Ann Baker said, "We've been collecting over a million dollars a year in extra excise tax." The excise tax money should be going to fixing the roads, for road repair. More than was budgeted every year because of people releasing cars every year. So, I think, as she said last year, we collected over a million, one. And, over and above what was budgeted on the excise tax.
Motion to approve, but as amended, Madam President, Councilor Camuso?
Thank you. And I was corrected by my council colleague and the young woman from West Medford. I said Sunnyhurst Farms. As we all know, Sunnyhurst Farms is now Goulding School of Dance. I meant to say the West Medford Spa. Thank you.
Will those in favor?
Of course.
Aye.
Offered by Councilor Penta, 15-334, be resolved that the mayor's continual failure, as requested by the city, by the council on many occasions, to provide adequate lighting correction to the downtown Medford Square area and the Route 16 parking lot next to the Condon Shell parking needs further discussion in the interest of Medford's public safety. Councilor Penta?
Madam President, the Condon Shell, this is probably, I think, maybe the 14th time that this council has addressed this. And I just don't know why the mayor just doesn't want to listen. Four months now, I mean, four weeks now into downtown Medford Square, and again, the lights are out. And you can go to all the squares, and it's epidemic. You know, National Grid, which has the lights for the city of Medford, used to have a gentleman at nighttime drive around the city, and he would identify all the lights that were out, and they would be repaired. Now, that stopped some time ago, and since that stopped, the city of Medford has done nothing to pick up the slack as it relates to that. I mean, you have to be blind not to realize, when you're driving through Medford Square right now, that there are eight lights out between CVS and going toward the banks and into the square. You know, public safety is a big thing. If you have to ask the chief of police, as I said today, "What is your biggest public safety concern as it relates to breaking and entering?" And he said, "It's lighting." And in downtown Medford, you go to Hanes Square, you go to West Medford, you go to North Medford, these lights are just out. So, I don't know what it's going to take for the mayor to realize that he has a responsibility. He's got to come out of that corner office that he hides in all day long, and he doesn't want to see what's going on. He needs to see what's going on. This is a public safety issue. It's going on each and every day. This is four weeks running now that those lights are out. And there's no excuse to say that we don't have personnel. From my understanding, they just got through hiring a new gentleman that's going to be in charge of the electrical department, a former Medford resident. So, with that being said, it isn't like that they don't have anybody. They don't have the personnel. And if they need to stagger a person for one day a week at nighttime to drive around to identify the lights that are out and then go out and correct them during the day, then just do it. National Grid is not doing it. We need to do it. Again, this is leadership that is so broken and falling apart, I have no idea. I have absolutely no idea what's going on and how this city runs on so many of these issues. But this is a public safety issue. You can speak to the chief of police, and every police officer will tell you the same thing. Once those lights go out, and as the lights continue to go out, it does present a public safety to a public person walking, driving, into the value, into the, into the safety of the store, that these lights are supposedly on there to shine on and to protect people's business investments here in the city of Medford. It's bad enough you go down residential streets and some of the lights are out, but when they're in the downtown business working area and the lights are out, you have now multiplied that problem for an incident of crime to take place or an accident to take place. So, with that being said, Mr. and Madam President, I move that the Medford City Council, on a roll call vote, tell the mayor to get these lights on immediately in the interest of public safety.
Council, Council President Delarussell?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, three years, three years, Councilor Penta has asked for the lighting to be addressed in the parking area at the Condon Shell. It would have been nice also to have more ambient and decorative lighting put in along the pathways that are down there too, that meander through on their way up to Winthrop Street, but maybe that's asking for luxury. However, in the interest of public safety, could we, to have at least a response, Madam President?
I agree.
This is out of our purview. This can't be done. We can't afford it. The MDC's supposed to do it. But we've gotten nothing, Madam President. And furthermore, throughout the city, where we've had the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs work on matters regarding lighting and improvements in that matter, we've seen great success. And they've made efforts to utilize new and approved lighting, that new one, the new type of lighting that uses the LED lighting, has been instituted up at Medford High School through a grant. We need to see this throughout the city, and she's getting it done. And so, maybe this can be done with some sort of grant through the Department of Conservation and Recreation down at their parking lot. But we should just be seeing progress and success in this. And especially since that becomes then a cost-effective and suitable alternative for parking under our new parking management program, to utilize that space down at the Shell, it becomes more and more imperative that this lighting be installed, and also that further efforts at public safety and improvement along the walkways and crosswalks over the bridge so people can traverse into Medford Square. So, I'm supportive of Councilor Penta in this resolution.
Thank you. Councilor Knight?
Madam President, thank you very much, and thank you, Councilor Penta, for bringing this resolution forward yet again. I think that, at the very least, we deserve a response on this. When I saw this resolution on the agenda, I scratched my head and I said, "This sounds eerily familiar. Sounds eerily familiar. I think I might have heard this once or twice or three times before." So, I did a little research and a little digging, and I took a look, Madam President. And the Condon Shell parking lot, I believe, was under the control and jurisdiction at one point or another by the DCR, the MDC, now the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And if you go on the website and you look up the Mystic River Reservation, the first thing it says is that the park is open from dawn till dusk, and the park is supposed to close when the sun goes down. So, that would lead me to believe that that's probably why we're not getting a response, because no one's supposed to be in there after dusk. But regardless of whether or not, we have a five-year service agreement with them. Yes, that is correct. So, we do have a service agreement with them. So, there's an agreement for the city of Medford to service the property. However, I think that that might be the sticking point right here, is the fact that, you know, the parking lot's supposed to be closed after dusk, so there might not be a willingness to make an investment there. However misguided that unwillingness is, I feel as though, you know, the parking lot should be lit. People should feel safe when they park there. I just think that we really need to get to the bottom of this. And the question is, why? Why isn't it happening? Give us an answer, at the very least, something that we can say, okay, agree with or not agree with, or something that we can come up with a plan to circumvent or to work within those confines, Madam President. So, you know, I certainly can understand Councilor Penta's frustration, and I think that, you know, moving forward, you know, I think we should pass this resolution this evening, but moving forward, if in fact we have to bring it forward yet again, that we have to get everybody in the room at the same time and say, "What's going on?" And we want an answer on this. Because, you know, it's very easy to send a resolution and wait for a response, and then it gets mixed in with other responses. But, you know, at the very least, respond, and we haven't gotten that yet. So, I think that everybody behind this rail's had it up to here in terms of not getting a response on this very issue. So, with that being said, Madam President, I'm in whole support of the resolution, and, you know, I think we can go a step further. Maybe if this isn't resolved within the requisite 10 days, to bring officials from the administration and the DCR down here to tell us why, what's going on, what's it going to cost, and what we can do to make it happen.
Thank you. Councilor Caraviallo?
Madam President, seeing that we have a new representative, Representative Barbara, why don't we get her involved? That's her district. Maybe, maybe the state is involved. So, if we can send a letter to her, to have her office get involved with this, maybe she can get a light down there for us.
That's a good idea. Councilor Marks?
I just want to thank my council colleague, Councilor Penta. As was mentioned, he's been persistent on this issue for a number of years, and I'm not sure why nothing has happened to date. But, you know, just, I think it was a month ago, a month and a half ago, this council requested that we take down the holiday candles that are still in the square. And now, I'm actually seeing why the mayor's leaving them up, because I think his overall master plan is, if the lights go out, he's going to turn the candles on. And maybe that's his way of lighting up the city. So, this, he may have a bigger project on his hands, here, Madam President. And, you know, we asked for the lenses to be replaced. They replaced the lenses. The lighting in the square, in my opinion, is still dark. I know there's a number of lights out. It's still dark in the square area. You know, it's not inviting after dark to go into the square, because, you know, let's face it, people want to go and feel safe in a well-lit area. And Medford Square is not well-lit. You just get a feeling like it's deserted. You really do. And it's a shame that you have businesses down there that have to put up with this. You know, not only did the mayor implement the parking kiosk to get your money, he's making it so you go down there and you need a flashlight to walk around with. I mean, it's really getting to a point, and Councilor Penta's right. You know, maybe the mayor should come out of his office or his house and walk around the city and traverse and see the potholes and see the sidewalks that are crumbling, and see the lights that are out, and go into the restroom across from his office and see the yellow caution tape around the urinal, and come here at City Hall and see the holes in the ceiling, and then go to the Medford Public Library, which is in Dionita work, and then go to the fire department and the police departments, police department that needs work. And maybe, you know, maybe he'll see what's going on in this community and get his head out of the sand and move forward on some of these issues, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilor Penta?
Real quick, even though, and I appreciate the remarks as it relates to the Route 16, equally as important is the lighting in the downtown area, especially downtown Medford, with these lights out. So, you know, these resolutions just don't go on the agenda lightly, as all of us do, because, you know, we believe in what we're doing. But if we can't get our responses, and that's why I said last week, we have a resolution on there. I hope the city clerk has upgraded his thing, and he inserted the 10-day slot, because that'll really tell us where we're going on a lot of these things. We still haven't gotten a response back from upstairs on the MS4, which is right around the corner, which is going to be a big cause to the city, if in fact we have to follow the EPA guidelines. We haven't got anything regarding, you know, our street recovery program. We could just go on and on and on, and a whole bunch of issues. But he's just not responding to. Maybe because he feels that the council's not bothering him, he's not going to respond to it. So, if that be the case, then maybe what we need to do, after Mr. Finn puts that 10-day period in, we just put it on here and we override his veto. And then from there, we just, it just becomes law. If I understand the way the rules go, if he doesn't respond within 10 days, it becomes operative. Is that correct, Mr. Finn? If he does not respond in 10 days, 10 business working days, the resolution asked becomes operative. And if he sends it back with a no, we take a two-thirds vote and override the veto, and if we override the veto, then we figure out what needs to be done. And if he wants to challenge this charter as the charter is written, well, then, you know, let it begin now, because this is really becoming totally unacceptable. These resolutions aren't even for ourselves. These are for the taxpayers of the community. They pay taxes for what we're talking about. And that man over there in the corner who wants to play King Solomon, he can't understand what's going on.
Yes, with the lighting issue. I agree.
Yeah, the Ten Commandments.
We're going to move for approval.
Roll call vote, Mr. President, Madam President. Send it to the mayor.
Roll call vote has been requested.
Councilor Delarussell?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Caraviallo?
Yes.
Councilor Knight?
Yes.
President Delarussell?
Yes.
Councilor Marks?
Yes.
Councilor Penta?
Yes.
Vice President Longo Kern?
Yes. The vote of seven, the affirmative, zero in the negative. The paper passes. Paper 15-335, offered by Councilor Penta, be it resolved that since the out-of-state Republic Parking Company that the mayor has hired to collect parking space monies continues to operate in contract violation, they should have their company operational vehicles taken off the road by the police department, ticketed, and be made to pay a fine until such time they adhere to the contract of responsibility. Councilor Penta?
Madam President, once again today, as late as today, I have pictures here, right here on the infamous Ring Road. Then we have, I think it's Benton Street and South Metro, right down the street from you, Councilor Delarussell, okay? And then we also have, I had a 42-minute conversation with our chief of police tonight as it relates to this. I told him, "Chief, the resolution's on there. You know what it's saying. You know what it's all about." I have tickets here that people continuously keep giving me, telling me that they're collecting monies from the meters that they're not supposed to be collecting. If you read the contract, the contract tells you how these vehicles are supposed to be addressed and highlighted. I know Councilor Delarussell's calling for a meeting. I believe it's Wednesday, the 22nd, I believe, or the 23rd, whatever it is. And we're going to have the people from Republic, the chief of police, and I believe it's the Traffic Commission. And as the council has asked, Mr. Finn, we've asked prior to that meeting to have a list of all the resolutions that the Traffic Commission has and has voted upon, and what's still outstanding. And one of the things that outstanding, Councilor Marks, is I asked the chief about it. I believe that your resolution regarding the 15-minute grace period, I believe today, a lady got out of her car in Medford Square, and she walked to the kiosk. And while she walked to the kiosk, the guy from Republic, the bounty hunter from Republic, came over, and he gave her a ticket, which is absolutely crazy, because think of this logically, anybody who's out there watching. You go to Medford Square, you park, and if you're five or six car lengths removed from the kiosk, by the time you go to the kiosk and walk back, how are we supposed to do what you're supposed to do? And the guy is going out there giving these tickets, and today, he's holding this handheld thing. It's not right. It doesn't make any sense. It's absolutely not fair. But the real good issue is going to come in two weeks. Now, just think, what's going to happen here in two weeks? Does anybody know? We're going to have a carnival, aren't we? And the carnival is going to be taking up all the parking spaces here at City Hall. So, all these wonderful people who are going to bring their kids and think they're going to go to a carnival and not worry about the parking, are going to go park in that parking lot over there with those stupid, stupid little kiosks against the building for which nobody can see at the end of the day, and the tickets are going to be galore. And then you're going to really see, you're really going to see the people getting upset about that. And the police department, because they're not going to want to handle it, because it's not in their bailiwick, because that's what they agreed upon by a union vote, not to be involved, to get involved, but do anything to do with the ticketing. And unfortunately for this chief of police, for which this wonderful mayor has saddled him with the responsibility of resolving all these problems. Well, as I said before, I said to the chief, "Unfortunately, this is not your job. You should be doing police work." You should be doing police work, not parking work. The parking work should be done by the mayor. And to have him indicate and say that he's never received a complaint, he's absolutely, I don't know what he's drinking or smoking, but he's on something, whatever it might be. We heard a lady here come up here tonight and tell you from her beauty parlor, that she not only wrote them, that she called them. We had last week, and I have the letter here from Mystic Valley, what's the thing for pediatrics?
Pediatrics.
All right? We got the doctor, we got the employees, and we have people who are seniors who were there, gave the names of the individuals who didn't even know how to use, never mind the kiosk, but getting tagged. People who park, people who have handicap placards getting tagged. I spoke to a lady that went to Here's Karen in West Medford during the second storm, the third storm, excuse me. An elderly woman whose daughter was driving her to Here's Karen. She gets, getting out of the car, and the Republic guy comes up to her, tells her to hurry up and move the car, or you're gonna get a ticket, while the lady's walking into the store. Now that's not what you call good business. And then when you go in all the parking lots, the signs that say two-hour parking is still up, and they're still giving out tickets, it's supposed to be three-hour parking. So we're right back to where we went, right from the beginning. The contract was signed October 10th. I don't even think there's been any human relations, interaction between any of these people that work for National Republic and the city of Medford. I mean, pardon me?
Ambassador.
They're ambassadors. I don't know what they're, yeah, you know, they're ambassadors for bounty hunters. That's what they are.
All right, all right.
So with that being said, Madam President, I just really think, and I know we're gonna have, we're going to have a meeting on the, I think it's the 23rd, but the contract violations just keep continuing. The pictures don't lie, and I think today, I think we all got, or at least I got, an email from folks on Frederick Avenue, who have legitimate parking permits to be parked there. They got tagged yesterday and today. So where does this begin and end? It's obvious that Republic doesn't know their job, or the people that are working for them don't know the territory of their job. They're giving out tickets indiscriminately. Last week, I believe the chief had to go up to Boston Avenue and resolve tickets for businesspeople up there, who were legitimately parked in a 30-minute parking zone, in a loading zone, delivering, making a delivery, and emptying stuff out of their car. And the response from Republic, if you don't like it, appeal it. Well, that's not the way it's supposed to be. They should know and do their job. Madam President, I would hope when the chief comes in two weeks, and the Traffic Commission comes in two weeks, and Mr. Nash and whoever he wants to come from in two weeks, it's obvious, all these things need to get resolved. But Councilor Marks, you came up with a good idea, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was last week. For those people who have paid, let's find out how great this electronic system is that they have. If I paid before eight, and I paid after six, they should have a listing of all of that, because my number plate was supposed to be tied into that system. And if we all remember correctly, and I think I do, because the records will reflect, I think that they said that they keep the records in that machine either for six weeks, if not eight weeks, okay? And if they keep them in there, pardon me? No, they don't purge them, they keep them for six, they have to keep them for the appeal period. They have to keep them for at least the appeal period. So I think, yeah, the tickets, okay, in the system. So with that being said, I think there should be no reason not to find out, Councilor Marks, there should be no reason not to find out how many people and how much money that they took. That's illegally, they're illegally, that's, you know, that's meter robbery, if that's what you want to call it, okay? And that's perpetrating a fraud. And you know who's getting rich out of this? Not only that, the mayor, he's making money on this, because it goes to the bottom line. But it's not right. It's bad enough you're taxing the people to death, and now you have this new McGlynn taxing that's every single day. Don't take money you shouldn't be taking.
Councilor Marks.
Yes, Madam President, I received several emails just recently, and over the last several weeks, regarding resident permit parking. There's still an issue with residents that have a permit parking sticker receiving tickets. And it was brought up over in West Medford and Bauer and that area, and I received another email, actually two emails just recently, about residents that are receiving tickets with permit parking stickers. So I'm not sure what's going on. Several weeks ago, we asked them to look into the system. We were told that there was a glitch with Republic, and for some reason, they were unable for a period of time to identify who had permit stickers and who didn't have them. And that was supposedly resolved. And now I'm getting more emails today with residents that are still getting tickets. And they're being told that they have to go up to the Republic office, which is a giant inconvenience with something that, by no fault of their own. So, you know, I can't wait for this meeting, too. I can't wait to get the finances on this program. I can't wait to find out some of the questions that we've asked regarding this program. And, you know, it may come to some point, and I'm starting to agree with Councilor Penta on this, that we may be looking, I think, to maybe take in-house some aspects of this program. And in my opinion, the enforcement would be number one. Take that in, get our own in-house people to start the enforcement. We can use their equipment, and, you know, we can keep a lot of the program in place. But I think many of the issues that I'm hearing comes with enforcement, the aggressive enforcement in nature. We were sold a bill of goods that, oh, they're not gonna be aggressive, they're not gonna be like Somerville hiding behind bushes and so forth. You know, there's gonna be a grace period. And now we heard Councilor Carvajello last week saying, the guy was standing behind his cow when he had three or four minutes left on the meter, he came out of the store, and the guy had his handheld device there, waiting to give him a ticket with his plate already written in. You know, so we went from, oh, no, they're not gonna be aggressive, to standing behind someone's cow, waiting for the minutes to tick off. So, you know, the residents could be the judge of this program, and no matter what the mayor sold as a bill of goods, you know, ultimately what happens is, they're driven by money. This outside private company is driven by money, and naturally, they're gonna be aggressive to try to bring in money. And that's gonna be at the detriment of the business owners and also the residents of this community.
Name and address to the record.
Good evening. Anthony D'Antonio, 12 Yale Street. Two points. I agree with the bounty hunter aspect of it, because today, as I was enjoying a cup of coffee, I watched one of the enforcement agents there, ambassador, I'm sorry, ambassador, and he went to this truck, of which this friend of mine was having coffee with me, and he had like 10 minutes there. The guy walked by, then he came back, and was hovering around the car, and he kept doing this. Kept doing this, so with about two minutes left, we had it right down to the sign, he went over there. This gentleman was waiting for this thing to expire, because he figured, well, it's like seven minutes left, he's definitely not gonna make it. That's, but that's been happening, okay? And I feel bad for the people that are up in the office of Republic, because they're only the messengers, and they're taking a lot of the grief, you know, the citizens who have the jobs there. But the problem I have is that we've had a reduction in enforcement, because when people went to get their stickers for permit parking, they got no stickers. So now, what happens is, we have an influx of cars coming in there after the enforcement is over, and on the weekends, and when you call the police, the police say, we don't know who has a sticker and who doesn't, because they don't have the software, they don't have the wherewithal to do it. So that's important. And when I called up Republic, they said, well, we're working on it. But I asked a simple question, I said, well, why did you change the scheme from giving out the stickers? I mean, everybody does that. You put a sticker there. And, well, she didn't have an answer, because she's not in the corporate end of things. So I'm hoping that when these people come, we have the meeting, that we get this answer.
They're going back to stickers.
Good. Now who's gonna be responsible for the payment of those stickers, for the cost of the stickers? And how will they do it? I mean, if everybody has their placards, and they're in the book already, how are they gonna get them to all the people? And who's gonna pay for that? If you have visitor passes, okay? No, 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 I understand that, but you went for the permit, you have the permit, and you don't have the decal, but you have two placards for visitor passes. How are they gonna get the decals to the people who bought?
They're gonna have to issue them, yeah, they're gonna have to issue at their expense, I would assume.
And it will be at their expense?
We'll find that out on the 22nd. We'll ask that question, and try to make sure that the resident doesn't have to pay.
All right. There's a lot of other issues there. I'll wait till this meeting comes up, but I just wanted to say that there's a net result so far on permit parking is negative. We're not getting the enforcement, and we're getting more people from Somerville parking on the side streets with this permit parking, because there's no enforcement. And you can't blame the police, because they don't have the information, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. Name and address to the record.
Joe Villione, 59 Garfield Ave. Before this was instituted, I wrote to the council and gave you articles about different cities and towns around America where Republic was reviled, legitimate news media, legitimate news media. And what happened, along with the people being upset, within Republic, there were discrimination suits. So this company was bad to begin with, the mayor knew this. You know what, I'd like to quote Al Pacino in The Devil's Advocate, "It's fun to be right, but it's not fun to be written this." I told this council about problems with Republic before it was installed, I talked about the Cable TV Commission. I'm not psychic, it's just obvious this mayor is not taking care of things. Now, two different people came to me and said that they had had problems right over the end of the credit union and Salvatores. One business person was at Salvatores, two hours, seven minutes left, got hit with a ticket, was irate. The delivery guy for the credit union was like a few inches over the white line, got hit with a $100 fine. The credit union is up in arms, I will leave it to them, to the people there, but they supposedly contacted the mayor. I gave them the mayor's phone number, and the person that I know there said that a lot of people were gonna call the mayor. We hear that the mayor hasn't got one phone call.
Thank you. So your resolve, Councilor Penta.
Real quick, Rick, I'm gonna go back to December 23rd of this past year. Your resolution, the mayor hasn't even acknowledged it, and you even gave him a grace period. Your resolution, as it relates to 14-795, basically says, and that, we had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, we had almost 11 people speak that night, amended by Councilor Carvajello, that a 60-day evaluation take place with the mayor and Republic with the council. And we gave the grace period to begin when it became operative in January 15, okay? This is now April 7. Never mind not having any meeting, we've got no financials. So this is what I would like to do in preparation for our meeting. Since we haven't had our 60-day meeting, I would like to amend and have the council go on record that effective immediately, that Republic meet with the council every 30 days for the purposes of going over its finances and all the complaints and the concerns that we have until this thing gets itself resolved. Because, you know, we're gonna be meeting with the Traffic Commission, and that's just gonna be a one-shot deal. And if we can't get them to give us a response after 60 days, and if we follow what you're saying, Councilor Marks, and we now go 30 days after that, forget it. How much more time do you want to give them to get their act together?
We're meeting on the 22nd.
The 23rd, Wednesday.
Well, let's see, will we go with that meeting before we make any decisions?
Yeah, I agree. So what do we have first resolved? Do you want us?
I want to have this resolved, be forwarded once again to the concerns that are gonna take place on the meeting of the 23rd.
So this paper be forwarded to the meeting we're gonna have on Wednesday, April 22nd, I believe it is.
Is it the 23rd or the 22nd? Eddie?
22nd.
22nd.
22nd, it's a Wednesday.
Yep.
So we're gonna refer this to the committee meeting. All those in favor?
Well, just before we do that, Madam President, again, with all these pictures that are there, and the chief knows about it, and he's aware about it, he's instructed Republic on more than one occasion to do it, and they haven't done it. And once again, I'm just publicly saying to the chief and any police officer out there, you see these cars, tag them. Tag them and tow them, get them off the road. Because you know something? If a poor guy drives down the street and he doesn't have a sticker on his windshield because he wasn't inspected, that's a $50 fine, and he has a right to have his car impounded. The same thing without having a registration. These guys have been around since January, and from January till now, they still haven't gotten their act together, especially with their vehicles that they go out, and they try to enforce the rules that they can't even have it. They try to enforce rules that they won't obey, but they want other people to obey. It's just not right, Madam President. That's what happens when you go out of town, and you get out of towners, and these people are bounty hunters, and they probably have quotas, and they're gonna do everything they can now to make life miserable, to make up for what they lost during the storms.
So we're gonna refer this to the committee meeting, we can discuss it further. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Councilor Caruso.
Exactly what are you saying they should be ticketed and towed for?
Well, we're referring this paper to committee.
No, 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 I just want to ask the counselor, exactly what, I mean, if it's just a sign on the back, the police can't ticket or tow them? I mean, are they not inspected?
It's a violation of the contract.
I understand that.
They've done it since January.
I understand that, but my question is, the police aren't the enforcing authorities on city contracts.
Registry of motor vehicles has a sign, has a citation section that says, if you make frequent stops, you have to have that on the back of your vehicle that says, this vehicle makes frequent stops.
That's my question.
And they have not done that. All they have is those stupid flashing yellow lights.
All right, that's my question. I didn't know what was actually wrong with the vehicle. I still haven't seen them, to be honest with you.
You're not gonna see them, because they don't have.
I see them put up pictures every week, that's it.
You got it.
Thanks.
Motion for approval to send this to our committee meeting, which is gonna be held on the 22nd of April. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Paper carries.
Madam President, can we allow, suspension of the rules to allow a citizen to speak?
Which citizen?
To get an update on the contract.
Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Joe Villione, 59 Garfield Ave. Just an update on the contract and public access TV. Today I met with Solicitor Rumley. He said he would alert me immediately if he hears something on a public hearing on Comcast, which I want this council to be aware, it's gonna be, gee, one of the city councils is missing. Every time I speak, instead of taking care of city business, the guy just vanishes. It's not proper, it's not correct. The April 18th is the time Tim Kelly at Comcast wanted the mayor to respond on a Saturday. I don't get this. And the 20th is the deadline. So Solicitor Rumley told me he would email me immediately if he hears, and he said Peter Epstein is handling this. Again, it's Peter Epstein. Now I also met with Senator Jalen today, and I met with her chief of staff as well, Tim Snyder. And I have alerted them to this contract Comcast, which I don't think they were aware of, they looked very disappointed. I asked the senator to please help us, we've been in touch about this issue. Tim Snyder and I have been in touch about this issue. I've also been in touch with Christine Barber by email about this issue. So everyone, Reptonato, Sean Garbali, everyone's aware of this issue. It's very, very important. We have no access TV, and we're not getting any answers from the mayor on this situation. Now I did talk to an expert about these things, and the expert said, within 40 miles of the Medford area, there are probably four or five cities or towns who are tenants at will. I don't know how legal that is, so I'm looking into that. But that's the update.
Thank you.
They, their contracts expired with their cable providers, and they just let the cable providers stay there with no contract. Now, four or five cities or towns I was advised, if I looked around, and the person told me within a forty-mile radius, so this person knows his business, that's fascinating, and that's something we should know about, that we're going to hold the mayor, we're going to hold his feet to the fire on this one.
Counsel Caruso.
If we could also get an update on the cable to find out when the new, it's not so new anymore, Verizon Fios contract is up for renewal as well? Because I thought that they were up around the same time. No, no, I know they came in after the fact, but I thought that they staggered it so that they would be renewed around the same time, I had thought that, but.
Counsel Penta.
One of the things I think it's kind of like really enlightening to read is the action that's taking place against the city of Lynn. We're, the prosecution really, the prosecutorial process has really gone in-depth as it relates to the finances that took place in the city of Lynn that were just not being justified and accountable for. And we have been asking for a long period of time over here, the former people that worked for Channel Three, to submit their finances, and it started back at Mark Rumley, when they call it the Rumley Report, and then when we had Judge Thompson, and now we're here, and nothing's taking place, you know? And the mayor, the mayor owes it, the mayor owes it to every single TV subscriber, he owes it to this council, we keep talking about it. He's sitting on three hundred thousand dollars of subscribers' monies with absolutely no accounting. And this is what precipitated the lawsuit in Lynn. And this is how they're all getting sued individually for whatever it might be worth. Lynn is one of eight communities that unfortunately, the public access channels just apparently ran amok because nobody was watching over them, just like this city here, nobody watching over them. And when the voluntary dissolution supposedly took place, I think it was October of two thousand and thirteen to now, and they said that they were going to submit all these papers, and the Attorney General, blah, 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 and it's just out there in limbo. But this new Attorney General, Mara Healy, she must, she must mean action. Well, big difference from Martha Coquely, because this one here at least does something, whether you like it or you don't, she gets back to you and she responds. And their in-depth action against the Lynn Cable Television should be the groundwork already being done for the city of Medford, just to copy the same thing and go after these culprits who just not has done what they're supposed to have done as it relates to, you know, providing the information, the minutes, the finances, you know, the equipment. It's just outrageous, and for the mayor, and for the mayor not to have this public hearing for which is required by just common sense, I mean, just for transparency, even if you don't want to, even if you don't want to even do anything but have it, let the people come and talk, what is he afraid of? I don't understand this man. I just don't understand it. He doesn't like the council because he doesn't respond to us, he tolerates the school committee because he has to go every other Monday when he has to go, he never responds to our resolutions. This is not leadership that works anymore. It might have worked in the beginning for him, but it's absolutely out of control, it's lazy, it's gone to sleep, it's broken, and I think he's probably thinking about, you know, maybe these bounty Hondas have a better job than him, and who knows, maybe he's going to go join a company like that. I have no idea. But this, this is absolutely not working.
Counsel Caruso's resolve, that we get an update with regards to when the Fios contract is up. Motion for approval by Counsel Caruso.
Do you want to ask also, in that Fios contract, the finances as it relates to it, how much we get each quarter, and, you know, how does that work into the whole program? No, 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 where are those monies? Do they come together with Comcast and Fios?
Absolutely. Counsel Caruso's resolve, motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Paper passes. Offered by Counsel Caviello, one five dash three three nine, be resolved, the Medford City Council offer its deepest condolences to the family of Joe Conway. Joe was an inspector for the city of Medford for many years for his recent passing. He will be missed by all his friends and family. While we're under suspend, while we're under suspension, also offered by Counsel Caviello, one five dash three four zero, be resolved that the Medford City Council offer its deepest condolences to the family of former superintendent of schools Raymond Morano on his recent passing. He will be missed by his many family and friends. Paper one five dash three four one, offered by Counsel Caviello, be resolved, the Medford City Council offer condolences to the family of Barbara Vel Castro on her recent passing. She will be missed by her friends and family. Counsel Caviello.
Thank you, Madam President. We lost two former city employees this weekend, both good people, a long time, and the last person, excuse me, her husband was a longtime chairman of the veteran services. This weekend was a great loss for the city of Medford, and if we could dedicate this meeting in memory of those three, I'd appreciate it, Madam President.
We all may rise for a moment of silence. Counsel Penta.
If anyone knew Joe Conway, you'd realize he was a consummate person, that you would want to be a representative of this city. He always smiled, he was never rude, he was polite, he knew his job, he was friendly, and at the same time, he did his job like he was supposed to. And if you needed a break, he would help you out, making sure that you did what you were supposed to do. That's what I remember about Joe, always had a smile on his face, and was always willing to talk and help out people, and I think I wish I could say that for everybody in this building, but at least we can say that about Joe.
Moment of silence. Records? Records of the meeting were passed to Counsel Caviello. Have you reviewed the records?
And, Madam President, in fifteen dash three two three, at the end, the motion was passed by Counsel Caruso and Counsel Delarussell, not Counsel Knight.
So make that one change, otherwise you find them in order.
Yes.
With approval? All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Counsel Caruso.
Thank you, Madam President. We're in receipt tonight of a letter in response to Resolution fifteen dash zero six one from Barbara Ruble at Tufts University. It's talking about the runoff water regarding the snow that they were dumping from their campus into the fields. As the neighbors stated, I think it's just as big of a concern as the, as, I know residents were concerned where Medford was dumping the snow. It's got contaminants in it, a lot of times oil and things of that nature. I don't see anywhere in this letter that addresses if at all there was looked at for environmental issues, other than just saying there was sand underneath the field, a big layer of sand which helps the water drain. I have a bigger concern with not the water draining and creating maybe a little moisture